I'd like to call to order the April 24th, 2023 Board Report Meeting. Welcome to everyone who's in attendance this evening. For the safety of all those in attendance, display of signs or banners will not be permitted. If you have a sign or banner, you will be asked to leave it outside the boardroom for the duration of the meeting. Tonight's meeting is a meeting of the Board held in public, not a public hearing or a discussion with the Board. Please be respectful of the presenters, the Board, and your fellow audience members as we discuss and deliberate the items on tonight's agenda. Comments or actions that are threatening to or disrespectful of presenters, the Board, or others in attendance, including use of foul language or any other behavior that is disruptive of the Board meeting will result in immediate removal from the meeting. Patrons will be invited to share comments as part of the public comment portion of the meeting as outlined in Board Policy BCBI. That time is set aside on the Board's agenda for members of the public to share their thoughts. It is not a time for dialogue with or question and answer session with the Board. Patrons who wish to participate in public comment must fill out the public comment form so that Board or staff can follow up with you regarding your public comment as needed. If your comments require follow-up from the Board or staff, that will occur after tonight's meeting. The District assumes no responsibility or liability for the information shared during public comment. The views expressed are solely those of the speakers and do not necessarily reflect the views of the Lawrence Public Schools. And ordinarily, I give a five-minute warning before the meeting. I failed to do that this evening. If you have, are here for public comment and did not sign up yet, please get your form to Elise now. In addition, USD 497 provides access to our Board meetings through live streaming. The platform used for this live streaming has acceptable use rules for content on its site. USD 497 does not delete or hide Board meeting videos. However, the streaming platform may elect to do so if the content of public comment or any other portion of the meeting is found to violate the platform's acceptable use rules. Thank you for your cooperation in these areas. At this time, a motion to amend and approve the agenda would be in order.
I move we amend and approve the agenda for the April 24th, 2023 Board Meeting to include the updated personnel report.
There a second?
This is Carol. I second.
Kimball?
Yes.
Van? Hill?
Yes.
Kadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Jones? Yes. Motion passes seven zero.
You. At this time, I am glad to bring to the podium Devon Heath, Gifted Education Facilitator from Free State High School to present student honors and awards.
Good evening. I'm here to celebrate three entities from Free State. They're going to kind of speak on their own behalf. But I'm just really proud of all of them. All three groups did really wonderful things, so enjoy.
Good evening. My name is May Gordon Washington, and I'm here because I was awarded the Janey Weekly Officer Award at the Topeka Mardi-ouan Conference of 2023. I've been involved in Mardi-ouan in various capacities for six years. I served as a delegate during my seventh and eighth grade years. I went to Chicago to be a delegate in the Mardi-ouan of the University of Chicago my freshman year. And then I've served as an officer in several different areas during the last three years and served as the Secretary General of the 2023 Conference this past year. Thank you.
Gus Peters won an award he's going to talk about.
Hi. Am I here? There we go. Okay. I am Gus Peters, and I worked with the Lawrence Juneteenth Organization to do some t-shirt designing for the 2023 Juneteenth Celebration. Here is that for you all. Overall, they were just extremely kind. They gave me a lot of creative liberty, helped me perfect my design, and really just gave me a new opportunity that I really haven't had with my heart before. So all the information for the event is at Lawrence Kansas, sorry, LawrenceKSJuneteenth.org. So that has the t-shirt order forms and the event planning, so y'all should go check them out. It'll be a great day, and I hope to see all of you there.
This is what it looks like when your team wins state chess.
Hello, my name is Stephon Rubin. I was part of the Scholastic State Chess Championship for Lawrence Free State High School. The Free State chess team scored 20 points out of 24, where a win is one point, a draw is half a point, and a loss is zero points.
Okay, my name's Zach Maschusmoni. I also went to the tournament. So we took eight people: Neil Sabarwal, Nathaniel Slemer, Stephon Rubin, Stephen Duan, Zach Maschusmoni, Drew Harrison, Arthur Benson, Felipe Rene Salas. And there were five of us who contributed to the winning of the, like, trophy, I guess, which was Neil with 4.5 out of 6 points, Stephon with 5 out of 6 points, Stephen Duan with 5 out of 6 points, Zach with 4.5 out of 6 points, Arthur with 5.5 out of 6 points, and yes, we scored a total of 20.
My name is Arthur Benson, and the Free State chess team also had success in the Blitz Chess Competition, which is a format of chess where instead of 30 minutes per player, each player only has five minutes to make all of their moves. I was able to get second place, Zach got third, and Felipe got sixth place.
Missions to our students. Thank you for being here this evening, and thank you to our staff who support these students and their amazing efforts. And also, I know Dr. Lewis always wants us to recognize the parents who are here of these students. So if you are a parent of one of these students, would you please stand up or give us a wave and say thank you? Did you want to add anything?
Just congratulations. Huge accomplishments there, and thank you to our parents that were able to attend tonight. I'm trying to buy my t-shirt right now.
Wonderful. Okay, next on our agenda, oh wait, we have, before we move on, my apologies. Paula, would you like to recognize our retirement this evening?
The Board of Education recognizes the following staff members with sincere appreciation for their years of service and devotion to this community and its schools. So we recognize Randall Fillmore for 18 years of service. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Okay, next is the report of the Superintendent of Schools. Dr. Lewis?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. If we want to start first, just some excitement still. I was thrilled to be able to introduce New York Times bestselling author Jacqueline Woodson to kick off her talk for 5th through 8th grade students at Liberty Memorial Central Middle School. Woodson is a friend of mine and definitely one of my favorite authors. She answered questions and collected, that were collected from middle school students. And these questions ranged from writing, reading, math. They asked her what type of math student she was in middle school. There were some equity-focused questions about representation, as well as a few of her favorite food and music taste. She also spoke at a public event on Thursday evening at Liberty Hall. This would not have been possible without our partners at the Lawrence Public Library. So huge thank you to Lawrence Public Library for allowing us to be a part of that opportunity. I was honored to be one of 25 superintendents from across the world to be asked to attend the Arizona State University and Global Silicon Valley Summit last week in San Diego. It focused on learning and the work of ensuring that all individuals have equal access to the future. In addition to hearing from Bill Gates, he did not give us any money, I had the opportunity to serve on a panel to provide CEOs and other major educational companies with feedback, including the reality of facing school systems today. It was really interesting. I was also able to share some of the many great things that we have going on in Lawrence, and it's like the eyes are, you know, wide, like, wow, you all are doing some great work there. So that was really exciting to be able to share. Also appreciate attending the Lawrence High Blood Drive to donate blood. Yes, I did donate blood this past Friday, and I made it, didn't pass out. This event was organized by our pre-med students who exceeded their goal by 55 units. So huge thank you to our pre-med students over at LHS. And pictured there is Dr. S., who the students call her Dr. S. She is phenomenal, I will say that. Many of you may know her. She was once a para in our district, and she is now teaching our pre-med class over at LHS. And from the Lawrence High Innovations Event to this event, I had several students just come up to me and just give her accolades in terms of what she means to the program there at LHS. So a huge thank you to Dr. S. and the pre-med students at LHS. Again, I want to thank the Board. Earlier this year, you approved the Handle With Care Program. And this is a partnership with our Lawrence Police Department in DECA. So far, it has assisted 61 students with dealing with traumatic events that were supported by law enforcement. You may remember that this program trains law enforcement officers to share what they call Handle With Care information with our school mental health staff so that the school staff is aware of and can support the needs of our students. So we're really appreciative of this partnership. We enjoyed recognizing the outstanding work of Lisa Jones, who's a Prairie Park Administrative Assistant, by presenting her recently with the District's Class Act Award. I want to give a shout out to all of the school and district administrative professionals who keep operations running smoothly and provide invaluable support to our administrators, our staff, our scholars, and families. This coming Wednesday, as you may know, is Administrative Professionals Day. We want to be sure to acknowledge how important our secretaries and administrative assistants are to our team. At our ESC staff huddle last week, we named James Jarvis. He's there in the back. Give it up for James Jarvis. Our technology help desk technician as the ESC Team Member of the Month for March. One of the many things that James does for us is to ensure that we are running smoothly here tonight at our Board meeting, and those that are unable to attend are able to see and hear the live stream, as well as those individuals that may choose to provide online public comment. He makes sure that they are in the room, in the space, and everything goes smoothly. Thank you so much for your support, James, and the many calls that you answer at the help desk and those calls that you solve with a positive attitude. Really appreciate you. We have a number of student honors and awards this evening. First, I want to start with Free State High School senior Wendo Kamori, who's also a member of my superintendent advisory council. She won the Princeton Prize in Race Relations for the state of Kansas. Wendo is also the founder and president of the Lawrence NAACP Youth Council. Among her many other accomplishments and efforts to amplify and celebrate racial diversity, Wendo also received the United Way of Douglas County's Wallace Galuzzi Youth Volunteer Award. Wendo is always active in something, and she serves on our district student equity team as well. So congratulations to Wendo. For the second consecutive year, Free State High School students finished at the top in the Junior Achievement Stock Market Challenge. And so if there's any families out there that need any type of investment advice, you may want to ask these young scholars here. Remember, last year was our first time entering the Stock Market Challenge and didn't finish first, but we obviously finished first and second this year. So congratulations to those individuals. Congratulations to both of our high schools for earning top awards for their video and animation projects at the annual Imagine Media Fest. Also, congratulations to LHS Senior Jonathan Spula, who has accepted his Service Academy appointment to the United States Merchant Marines Academy, where he will also be a member of the swim and dive team. Both high schools' speech teams performed well over the weekend at the Eastern Kansas National Speech and Debate Association Qualifier. Free State placed first with 11 national qualifiers, and Lawrence High placed third with six national qualifiers. In addition, Free State's Kelly Thompson and Brenda Alvarez were named the Eastern Kansas Speech and Debate Coach and Assistant Coach of the Year. I want to thank University of Kansas baseball player Michael Brooks for his support of our schools. He has pledged to donate $20 for every hit that he gets this season to the Lawrence Schools Foundation for School Supply. So we hope that he has a stellar at-bat season this year. Our LHS Core Department will present Showtime this week on April 27th, 28th, and 29th at 7:30. For the past 45 years, Showtime has showcased our talented student musicians performing top hits from world and popular music, Hollywood and Broadway, accompanied by a professional band. Tickets are just $10, and those tickets can be purchased at Hy-Vee, the LHS Finance office, or at the door. As a reminder, we have just 20, or 22 days away toward the end of the school year, and I want to take this time to send my thanks to everyone for staying focused and continuing to give the very best effort and staying strong as we finish out this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. Next is the President's Report. I have a few things to share this evening. Wanted to say thank you to Kimberly Hawks for the invitation to attend the LHS CTE Innovation Fair. It was really wonderful. Saw a lot of amazing artwork, business projects, projects from all the different CTE, and the food was good. Yep, the culinary students, they even had some live animals, which was my favorite, my daughter's favorite. She got to hold the very big fluffy bunny that was out in the Latin courtyard, so thank you. It was a really great event. That was happening the same day as the JV Track Meet at LHS, which I also attended. Policy Committee met last Monday. The results of that work from that committee meeting are on our agenda tonight for a first read. So I'm excited about the new policy that the Policy Committee is bringing forward and want to thank Patrick Kelly and Sean Hanson for their excellent work on that policy and helping the committee get that before the Board. Also attended Equity Advisory Committee meeting on April 18th. They had a discussion about the district boundary work and kind of leading into the Boundary Committee meeting that happened on the 19th and then what's on our agenda this evening. I want to thank the District and staff for the invitation to attend the Spring Staff Mixer last Thursday. I enjoyed connecting with staff members who were there and hearing about their work and also some fun things that they do outside of work. And then finally attended the Varsity Track Meet at Lawrence High School, or at Free State High School last Friday. That's an amazingly large event, and I know it takes a lot of volunteers, parents, and students and staff to put that on. So I want to thank all of them for that amazing work. Quick legislative update for the Board and the community. The wrap-up slash veto session started today. This week, the House and the Senate will be considering their incomplete homework and also whether there are vetoes. The Governor has vetoed quite a number of bills since the regular session ended a couple weeks ago, and so there, I imagine there will be some veto override vote attempts. The good news for public education is that she vetoed the regressive flat tax bill, Senate Bill 169, this morning. That would have severely damaged the state's budget, and that, as we know, always has an impact on K-12 education. She also vetoed a whole series of anti-trans bills. I want to thank Governor Kelly for her actions to protect our trans students. And unfortunately, I And unfortunately, I anticipate that those will be some of the subjects of veto override attempts and we're just all going to have to watch that very closely. As a reminder, the legislature had not taken any action before the end of the regular session to pass out a bill that included the K-12 budget or special education funding. They didn't take any further action on that today, although Senator Ty Masterson said that they have lots of different vehicles where they could stick those provisions into them and pass them. So we're going to have to pay close attention to what that looks like and I encourage the board and our community to be watching that work closely. She also, I saw vetoed the Parent Portal Bill, which, that sounds nice, except for what it really would have done in practice would have been to hamstring teachers from differentiating instruction because they would have been required to post all of their materials before the beginning of the school year and then wouldn't be allowed to deviate and use any materials that weren't posted in advance in the parent portal. So I was glad to see that she did not sign that bill. Finally, for board members, as you know, we postponed our board retreat in early April. I'm going to be working with our board clerk to send out a doodle poll to try to identify some dates to do one or more, what I'm going to call mini-retreats for the board. We do have some work we need to do that we would ordinarily do in a day-long retreat. I think if we chunk it up, we can accomplish it probably in sort of either shorter special meetings or work sessions. In particular, the board, we need to do our self-evaluation as required by board policy annually. And we also need to start having some conversations around a number of policy items related to the work that we have to do at our July organizational meeting. So I'll be working with Elise on that to get information out to the board and kind of gauge when everybody's available. Also, in the coming months, I expect that we will schedule some additional work sessions related to board meetings, in particular around facility and operations work to look at what savings the district could achieve if we were to engage and undertake solar energy projects in the district. That's probably the first one that will be up. But we also have work to do as a board around creating policies and procedures to adopt before the end of this year around the new inter-district transfer statute that was passed last year by the legislature, as well as the new graduation requirements that go into effect for, I believe, this year's 7th grade class will be the first class. So we have it, you know, until they finish 8th grade next year, we need to be starting our policy work to prepare for that. So that's all I have. I know that was a lot. Thank you for your patience. At this time, we will move on to public comment and I believe we do have a couple of public comments, general public comments. So could I ask a board member to read our public comment procedures, please?
The USC 497 Board of Education welcomes public comments and thanks you for taking the time to talk to us about our policies and procedures. We set aside this time during our regular meetings to hear from the public. Patrons who wish to participate in public comment must fill out the public comment form so that district staff or the board can follow up with you regarding your public comment as necessary. This is your time to share your opinions. However, public comment is not the appropriate forum for making complaints about specific staff or students. If needed, the board president and presiding officer of the meeting may direct that a patron's comments be heard by the board in an executive session in order to protect the privacy of the individuals to be discussed. Before participating in public comment to share a complaint, the board requests the public commenters follow the complaint procedures set out in board and district policy as appropriate. If you need assistance in these processes, please let the board clerk or other district staff know. The board president will invite commenters on topics not included on the agenda at the beginning of each meeting. Comments related to agenda items are welcomed after the board has had the opportunity to discuss the topic. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The district assumes no responsibility and/or liability for the information shared during public commentary. The views expressed are solely those of the speakers and do not necessarily reflect the views of the Lawrence Public Schools.
Yeah, we have three, three public comments this evening for this portion of the meeting, Marsha Riggins, Ariel Miner, and Topher. So Marsha Riggins, I'd invite you to the podium, please. And then Ariel will be next, and then Topher.
Good evening. My name is Marsha Riggins. I have been an educator with Lawrence Public Schools for 20-plus years. I have spent half of those years in a brick and mortar and half at LVS. Dr. Lewis is my fifth superintendent. Randy Wiesman was my first. At New Teacher Orientation, Wiesman addressed all the new eager educators of Lawrence. He personally went around the room and gave us each a puzzle piece. His message was simple yet powerful. Without any one of us, the puzzle of LPS was incomplete. While he didn't always agree with his decisions, he did understand the guiding principle of public education, to serve students. One of Wiesman's greatest accomplishments did not just impact the students in Lawrence, but the students in the state of Kansas. Wiesman, along with educational visionary Gary Lewis and parents in and around the community, Lawrence Virtual Charter School was successfully created. LVS opened in 2004 as one of Kansas's first virtual schools. At first, LVS primarily enrolled students whose parents wanted more support and structure as they homeschooled their children. Lewis left in 2010 and Keith Wilson led LVS to an enrollment of nearly 1,200 students in grades K through 8. In 2013, grades 9 through 12 were added. In addition to serving traditional homeschooling families, LVS partners with private schools, in-district students, student athletes in training, students fighting for their lives, and students who have struggled and weren't welcomed or aren't accepted in their traditional schools. LVS is not an online school. LVS is not an alternate school and is not a post-COVID remote school. LVS is a virtual school. Somewhere between Wiesman and Lewis's innovative creation and our current administration, the understanding of virtually educating Kansas students has been lost. Not understanding the intricacies of one of your schools is sad, but not taking the time to learn about it before you make significant changes to every aspect of it is wrong. This administration has taken a thriving virtual school and driven many of our veteran families and students away. In the past, we welcomed and partnered as we guided parents, grandparents, family members who chose to keep their children at home and let LVS educate them. Last year, an ELT member stated he didn't care what families wanted. He was focused on educating students. What he missed is that it doesn't have to be one or the other. It simply has to take understanding where there are similarities and differences. Understanding the why of those differences and most importantly, that being different is okay. This administration's unwillingness to engage LVS stakeholders, listen and hear what makes LVS a home to so many is inexcusable. Learn about what virtual education at LVS is before you make decisions regarding it. You are willing to gut a school with decisions regarding LVS classes, curriculum?
Marsha, thank you. Your time has expired. If you have additional comments, please email them to Elise. She'll make sure the board gets them. Thank you. Next is Ariel Miner.
I'm going to paint a picture for the community. In two years, you're driving down Sixth Street and past what used to be Pinkney, except now it's a private school serving those who can afford to send their kids to what used to be your neighborhood school. Or you pass Liberty Memorial Central Middle School. It is also a private school. Calling it a charter or magnet school is just a way to try to hide that it's private profit-driven. The community fighting for the neighborhood schools is the right thing. It's the only appropriate response. We're told to watch what's happening in Topeka. Keep your eye on the legislature. I say keep your eye on this district. What if the plan has been in place all along to take our beautiful historic buildings and lease them out or straight up sell them to charter school and private school entities? Won't it make you furious to drive by Liberty Memorial Central Middle School and see it privatized? And all of this was just a front to try to convince you all that this plan in place from the start was the right one for the children and teachers, right? What if our generous donors are actually more like investors, holding, investing their money in the activity funds of these schools until the time is ripe to pounce and take over? Why are the activity fund financial reports removed or send you to the same incomplete document over and over? Why did the board policy change to demand that board members meet with the superintendent privately? Where is our democracy? Why would magnet or charter schools be the answer when statistically they perform the same or oftentimes worse? Charter schools allow for less transparency and more funneling of money into private hands. They are known to have less accountability and oversight. And last I checked, this was the opposite of what public school proponents want. But there is a lot of money to be made if public schools fail. I will repeat, there is a lot of money to be made if public schools fail. And if failure of schools means profit for a few, then there will be those who have an interest in proving failure, encouraging failure. And isn't it interesting that the schools on the chopping block are solid historic buildings that we just spent millions to beautify? For who? I really wanted to know why it felt like our district was being destroyed. And when I say there is an authoritarian takeover in our schools, I'm not being dramatic. Follow the money. The transparency is gone on purpose. The accountability is gone on purpose. Watch closely at what happens to these buildings. Who wants to invest? Who wants to be in control? Who gets left behind? That feeling the community has that something isn't right is because something isn't right. We are not all crazy. I encourage the community to look into the Broad Philosophy of School Reform, B-R-O-A-D. Google the Broad Academy School Closure Guide. It will be eerily familiar. And if my tone is intense, good. Freedom of speech is still allowed, right? Follow the money. There's more to this budget crisis story. The light through this darkness is the truth.
Next is Topher.
This is Declaration of Independence by Jessica Elise. I declare my independence from fear. As in the course of human events, its time has run near to come undone. In order to assume among the powers of the earth, a decent respect to the opinions of mankind and of natural law requires me to declare that which impels me to this separation. Don't worry. This is just preparation. I declare my independence from fear. I cannot afford to be afraid to pay the fair for my fair shot. That's not why I'm here. I want the whole lot of it. I want the whole world to just wake up already and rise above it. But above all, I want to be recognized by the law and all its protections. But above all, I want to be recognized by my family and neighbors and all my relations because all our relationships are sacred. I want to create a safer world for all the fabulous boys and girls and all the both and the neither. I want a wiser world willing to stand up and fight for one another, whether enemies, sisters, or former lovers. And regardless of whichever other box they make you check. It's time to get on deck and get on board. Put down the blazing swords you fashioned from the blasphemed meanings of teachings teeming with the messages of love. Rise above and meet your true Savior in savoring the only thing that's real. Love without fear, that's why I'm here. And I am not ashamed that it is my aim to reclaim this unnamed territory. Clearing out the lost spaces, I seek out the traces of near meaning. Gleaning my insights from the light of your mighty embers, seeming together the teeming dismembers of our collective soul so that we might remember a world full of holes and perfect fittings. A world perfectly fit for giving ourselves too. But I am not through reclaiming the marred and maimed pieces of you and of me and of just us. Reclaiming justice from the rusted-out buckets of this bustling ruckus that shouts you to silence. Inflicting the violence of your soul's reaction to a life in a world without community or compassion. I am here to fashion a new world in the wake of your dissatisfied hatred, transforming it into something sacred and holy ours. Ad astra per aspra means to the stars through difficulty. I have difficulty reconciling what remains of the world I was promised as a child. We have let our desires run wild and run amok and it's time we started giving a f- about the world we're creating. The debate is over. I'm tired of waiting. Aren't you tired of the hating and judgments and sating yourself at the expense of nature and birthright? Aren't you tired of living in this eternal night? Let me know when you get so tired that all you can do is fight for what's right in front of you, right here. Love without fear, that's why I'm here. Unashamed, reclaimed and revered. Their reverence to the irrelevance of upward mobility is a full-fledged futility. It wastes our ability. I'll wait for you willingly to stop and declare independence. Do not grieve about defenses.
If you have more. You are welcome to email it to the board. Thank you. Topher, I need you to, I need you to be done. Thank you very much. Okay. At this time, we have board commentary and I would like to introduce our student board member this evening, Becca from Free State High School. Welcome back. We're glad to have you join us again. And if you would like to give board commentary or participate in any of the discussion, please join in when you feel ready. So at this time, board commentary. Kelly. Okay.
Paula and I have been engaged in negotiations with PALC WA and LEA as part of our role on the Negotiation Committee representing the board. I wanted to give you a couple of updates on that. We are in somewhat of a holding place on issues related to wages until the state has done its work related to school finance. So we're waiting on that. And for the individuals watching who are wondering what next steps will be, we will then have, as soon as we know, the amount that will be coming into the district. Typically, we have a meeting again with the, with LEA, our PALC WA, make determinations about wages. And there is in there, depending on the timeline and executive session, where we have conversations about how best to support our staff related to wages. So that's what's upcoming. And then just to highlight in some of our recent meetings, on April 17th, we had our first, it's traditional-based bargaining with PALC WA and we exchanged letters indicating what items we would like to discuss through the process of negotiating our contract for next year. I appreciated everybody and what they brought to the table during that meeting and I look forward to extending, hopefully, a good resolution to all parties before the start of the school year. And then we also met on April 18th and this has been a, this meeting was related to PALC WA's matrix. It's, you will, board members will remember, we're doing matrix work at both LEA and PALC WA. I found the meeting that we had on the 18th really hopeful and I hope the board will as well. We are fortunate to have Megan Epperson playing a role in HR now. And with her leadership and PALC WA's leadership, I think we have found, along with Kevin and Paula Marsh, who were with us, Kevin Harrell, excuse me, a path that to me looks like one of the most promising paths we've been on since I've sat on the board. So I'm hopeful. It involves nesting and other aspects of compression of our, well, actually, this is expanding the scale, but I'll have Megan explain it, not me. When it's time to discuss it with the board and Paula will be there as well to help advocate for that. So that, to me, I'm really excited about that work and I look forward to seeing how and where it goes by the, hopefully, here in June or maybe mid-May. On April 19th, I attended the New York Elementary Site Council and again, received some education related to Montessori. And I wanted to share with the board members, there is, I learned a philosophy about observing Montessori education. And Dr. Lewis, they told me how you go into a room and you sit quietly and observe. You don't engage with the students. And they shared with me that you have done this. Every time I've been with you, you are actively engaged with students when we're in a classroom. So the idea of you sitting observing was a visual that I hadn't expected to hear about. So that is an invitation that was extended to the board and I would like to propose that in February, when we have, we understand who's going to be sitting on the board and before that, for those of you that are here now, that we have a board visit to observe the classrooms and to learn more about Montessori. And I have one, sorry to be taking so much space. I have one thing I wanted to make sure I shared about that. And I wrote this down so I wouldn't get it wrong. When thinking of the cost of each of our programs, and this I'm taking with the help of Montessori instructors, we look at them clearly and completely, but when you're setting up a Montessori classroom, there are first-time purchases, so we see the expense there. But as we move into the curriculum and Montessori classroom, we find that there's actually can be savings there. So the technology, for example, will not be a cost to the district. They are very thoughtful about how they use items and reuse items. They're, they are very thoughtful about how they use items and reuse items. I learned about beautiful containers that you use over and over and over again. So there's opportunities for the community to invest in, in that school in terms of donating items. But additionally, just in general, I, I learned what the ongoing costs might be to the districts in there, and we probably realized some savings as it relates to capital outlay. So wanted to share that. And then I met with Liberty Memorial Site Council shortly after our last board meeting. And with that particular site council, and congratulations, Dr. Schmidt, for taking the interim principal position there, I heard from that site council and asked from the district to help them understand the, what Liberty Memorial will be, to keep engaged with them as we redesign Liberty Memorial, which will remain a middle school moving forward and will not be privatized or purchased and is not for sale. And that school is very much looking forward to participating in that process. They would like to have a little bit more information and increase communication around what next year would look like. And I had an opportunity to talk to Dr. Lewis about that and want that site council to hear that he was very receptive, and I know they're already working on how to increase information there, particularly around boundaries for middle schools as we move into the next year. So those were the things I promised I'd share, and I will step aside for others, board members interested in participating in commentary.
Any other board members have board commentary this evening? If not, we will move on to our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are those that are considered routine and are adopted by one motion unless any board member or the superintendent requests that an item be removed. That item or items are, that are removed are voted on separately. Are there any items to pull? Okay. All right. We're ready for motion then.
I move the Board of Education to adopt the items listed on the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second. I'll second. Van?
Yes.
Hill? Kadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Our next item is an item of old business on the bond refunding resolution. I would invite Cindy Frick, our Executive Director of Finance, to the podium to introduce this item, please.
Good evening. David Arterberry with Stiefel Public Finance is here with us tonight, and he's going to talk more about the bond refunding and the resolution.
Thank you, and good evening. It's a pleasure to be here again this evening. If you recall, I was here at your board meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we talked a little bit about refinancing two outstanding bond issues that the district has, a 2013 and a 2014 issue. Those bonds right now have an outstanding balance of about $54 million, and they carry an average interest rate of about 3.9%. And based on current market conditions, we think that we could refinance that with a new bond issue, use the proceeds of the new bond issue to pay off the old bonds, and have the new bonds issued at a rate of about 2.8%. That would generate approximately $3.9 million in savings to the school board over the next 10 or 11 years. So last time I was here, I just sort of generally talked about the process. Tonight, what you have in front of you is a resolution. I think I might have mentioned this when I was here last week, or last meeting. It's called a sale resolution or a go-to-market resolution. What it basically does is officially authorizes staff and us as your advisor, as well as legal counsel, to proceed with a sale, to prepare a disclosure document for the issue and bidding documents, and to distribute those to firms, financial institutions around the country, and then conduct a sale. The sale of the bonds would occur at your meeting on the morning or afternoon of your board meeting on the 22nd, and then we would return to you that evening with the results of the sale. And as long as they met your savings target that I'll talk about in just a minute, you would then be asked to adopt a bond resolution that would actually lock in the new bond issue, the new interest rates, and lock in that, those savings. So that's a little bit about what we're doing tonight, the, or what I'm, what you'd be considering doing tonight. This is not the final step in the issuance process, but it is a big step, because the next time we come back to you, if you adopt the resolution tonight, we'll be at your May meeting, and hopefully, at that time, we'll have taken bids, and you'll be presented with a refinancing that saves you money, and you'd be expected to adopt the bond resolution at that time. So it's not the final step, but it is a big step. So if you've got questions, this would be the time to ask them. Before I talk a little bit about the savings, did anybody have any questions about the resolution and the process? One of the things that we want to make sure we do is, when we come back to you on the 22nd, we want to make sure that you're pleased with the results. So what would ask you to do is establish tonight a minimum savings target. Now, I, I really hope that the interest rates stay low, and I really hope that when we come back to you, we're going to show you a number much bigger than the minimum savings target. I hope it's bigger than the 3.9 million that we're estimating right now, but we, we need to make sure we set some parameters here in the event that interest rates move. If they should go up a little bit and the savings isn't as big as we expect right now, would you be happy with that? So we, I talked a little bit to, to staff about what would be a reasonable savings target. And when I was here last time, I mentioned some industry benchmarks. Our industry tends to look at savings in terms of present value. When we look at those benchmarks, we, the, the number that we came up with was somewhere about $1.25 to $2 million in savings is the minimum target. But we, we talked about a little bit, and that seemed a little bit low, especially since right now we're, you know, close to $4 million in savings. So we thought a reasonable target, and again, this is your guy's decision, but we thought a reasonable number might be $2.5 million of savings. That would allow interest rates from these levels to go up about four tenths of a percentage point and still be able to, to hit that minimum target. You know, it just seemed like it was a fairly round number. It's, that is a little bit higher than what an industry standard would be, but we felt, again, that it was a reasonable number and would, you know, hopefully be achievable, but not too low of a number.
Okay. Questions for David?
I'm okay with that number.
David, I, I do have a question. So I think the Fed is supposed to be meeting soon, right? And they've been on a trajectory of increasing interest rates. Are they meeting, are they meeting before May 22nd?
You know, that's a good question. I don't know if they are. I, I think, though, at this point, the market has already sort of priced in another increase in interest rates of, I think, about a quarter of a percent.
Okay.
Actually, about a week or two ago, I think the, the market was, wasn't, might not have been leaning towards another increase in interest rates, and our savings at that time was well over $4 million. But I think there was some economic news that caused people to feel that the Fed is going to continue to raise rates, at least at this next meeting, another quarter point. And I, the market adjusted upward, and our savings came down a little bit. But I, I think even if there is another meeting, I'm not sure that's going to materially impact the rates.
Okay. And the reason I, right.
And third, Shannon.
What was that?
May 2nd and 3rd.
Okay. And the reason I asked is because I, I was trying to just think about that difference between the high end of the industry standards that you mentioned at 2 million versus 2.5 million as the recommended minimum for, for us to adopt. And so, I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with 2.5 million if you are, but I did want to ask that question. It, it helps me to know that you think that the, that they've already priced in that kind of rate increase in anticipation at this point into the calculations that you're looking at.
Yeah. And, yeah, I, I, I don't like to try to predict interest rates, but I, I think that, I, I feel that, you know, comfortable saying that I think the market at this point, unless some other news about inflation comes out that, that would think it leads you to believe it's going to extend further. But the other thing is, you know, if, if we can't hit that level of savings, what we'll do is we'll, we'll postpone the sale and we'll report back to you at your meeting on the 22nd. And at that time, if we wanted to adjust that target and lower it, and we could do that and then try the sale again, so.
So we would have an opportunity to rethink if things don't pan out the way that, that we're anticipating?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any additional questions or, yes?
With the motion, with the motion, so it, it seems that there's some flexibility, like it, does it, it's like a, like the target, if you will, right? So the motion would be, like, it may result in a minimum or it won't be will, right?
Well, the way that it's written, it would be, you would just basically say with the understanding that the bond sale, that the bond sale result in a minimum savings of 2.5 million.
Okay. So there's flexibility there. Or is it like an absolute minimum?
If, if we use this language and you plug in the 2.5 million, I think what would happen is if they didn't meet that, we would enter the procedure that David was just discussing, where they would come back and report that to us, and we would have to decide if we wanted to try again with a lower minimum. Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah, that would be my plan.
Okay. Dr. Lewis? I get that. Okay. Other questions or thoughts? If not, then is someone ready to make the motion?
This is Kay. I move the Board of Education to approve the resolution authorizing the sale of the General Obligation Refunding Bonds, CERI 2023A, with the understanding that the bond sale result in a minimum savings of 2.5 million.
Second. Hill?
Yes.
Kadu Blackwood?
No. Oh, yes, yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Van?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hope to look, hope to see you next month with some good news.
Great. We'll look forward to seeing you on the 22nd. Thank you. Okay. Our next item is new business. New pre-K through 12 social-emotional curriculum, Character Strong, a proposed 2023 to 2025 contract. And I would like to welcome Kylie Luckett, our Mental Health Coordinator, to the podium here. And then we have Dr. Cynthia Johnson, Executive Director of Inclusion, Engagement, and Belonging, joining us virtually.
Good evening to the board, and thank you for this opportunity to bring you some absolutely exciting news about the work that is taking place over the past year. My name is Cynthia Johnson. I am the Executive Director of Inclusion, Engagement, and Belonging. And tonight, I am here to be able to bring you part of the exciting news. Kylie Luckett, who is there at the podium, will also share additional information in her role as the Mental Health Coordinator. This has been a very, very exciting year, and we're just ecstatic to be able to share this information with you tonight. Before I go into the presentation, I want to take a moment to say thank you. Thank you to each staff member that attended meetings since last May of 2022, who attended meetings over the summer, who has participated in the pilot this year, who has given us feedback each time we sent out surveys, who has attended meetings when we've had meetings to get feedback, who have invited us into your classrooms for, so we could see it firsthand. We have had an opportunity to really put together a robust pilot, and because of that, we have a recommendation that we want to make to you tonight. I want to begin with making a case for social-emotional learning. I know that I do not have to convince anyone about the importance of social-emotional learning, especially as to where we are right now after COVID. But I do want to take a moment just to focus on social-emotional learning and to remind us that sale is a form of life skills that have been a part of education for decades. One of the things that you will find is that it's been called many different things. You can go all the way back to Maslow's hierarchy of needs, and then to where we are today with social-emotional learning. And these are life skills that have been a part of our work in the field of education. And it has been shown that students that have these life skills, if you will, coupled with their academic programming, that they'd be better prepared students to succeed in school and life beyond high school graduation. That is our goal of education. Next, the next slide will show you how social-emotional learning is truly in the center of everything that we do. If you remember, this fall, I brought to you a placemat that talked about equity and how equity and inclusion is in the center of everything we do, and that is true. Also, is true with social-emotional learning, whether it's cohesive curriculum, student-centered learning, safe and supportive schools, effective and committed employees, or data-informed decisions. Social-emotional learning is in the center of each strategic plan goal. Next, you will see the lineup for this evening. Kylie Luckett will go ahead, and when it comes to this time, to share all of our team members that will come and bring you highlights. I just want to say a personal thank you for accepting our invitation to share information with our board members. On our next slide, I want to take you into just a little bit of the Castle Five and the Interactive Wheel. One of the things that I want you to know is that each curriculum that we looked at as an entire team was aligned to the Castle Five and the, the Interactive Wheel. The Castle Five is really not just known here in the United States, really worldwide, as a leading researcher and focus area on social-emotional learning. So our curriculums that we looked at, that we piloted, were aligned to the work that you see here. If you look at the blue circles around the, the graphic in the middle, you will see that it not only involves classrooms, schools, families, and caregivers, but it also involves our communities. Tonight in our presentation, we want to be able to show you how we're going to engage all of those different layers to be able to ensure that we have a curriculum that meets the needs of not only our students, but also our families. On the next slide, you will see the social-emotional learning curriculum examining tools. I wanted to take a moment to be able to share this work that we utilize locally here in Lawrence Public Schools as we looked for different curriculums. I want to, I'm going to begin with the social-emotional character development model standards. I, I want to take a moment to say thank you to Jose Corneo, who brought these to me last year in our work and things together. And this was so important as we were looking at curriculums, because we wanted to make sure, not only was it aligned with Castle, but we also wanted to make sure that it was aligned to the social-emotional character development model standards for Kansas. You will see our C, you will see on the screen our CSRC. So we focus on our equity work, and we look at our culturally sustainable resource criteria, and we put that into a process where we analyze each of the areas to ensure that the curriculums that we were utilizing or recommending or even piloting were aligned to the CSRC. You will see another shift. I shared this with you last spring. This is the work of Ed Trust and looking through social-emotional learning through an equity lens. These are all pieces that were important to the work of even selecting the curriculum. On the next slide, you will see a triangle that is very familiar in the work that we do. Our CI3T is our guide and our, our, our house, if you will, that everything that, that fall, and it falls under this. Our CI3T is our guide and our house, if you will, that everything that falls under this CI3T. So you will see at the bottom of the triangle, you'll see at the bottom of the triangle that it has the academic, behavioral, and social emotional piece. So we're focusing on that social emotional piece right now. The next slide is the social emotional learning selection process. In this process that I shared with you last spring, there were a total of five steps. And in those five steps, we followed exactly what was on the screen. We had sat down and predetermined this is the process that we wanted to follow, and tonight we're giving you the results of this entire process. The next slide focuses on our social emotional needs assessment. This part was so important. Castle has a very powerful needs assessment, but one of the tools that we found that was also, once again, that was aligned to Castle and the work, and I think it really, in some ways, went beyond even what Castle looked at, is a needs assessment tool that we found from the Wallace Foundation and Harvard University. And in this social emotional learning needs assessment, you will see there are four different steps. Under each one of those areas, you'll see that for step one, each committee, our cohort, if you will, we had an elementary cohort, a middle school cohort, and a high school cohort. And from those areas, each committee and cohort had to go through each one of the steps, looking at the needs and goals and the data. People didn't just sit down and say, oh, this is what we want to do. Our cohorts had to sit down, look at the data, all the data that we had available before us to help inform our decision-making. And then taking us all the way to step four, and there were multiple meetings that took place before we got to step four, before we could select the overall program. The next slide is just a quick glance snapshot of the needs assessment of what each cohort said. First of all, elementary said, we need a curriculum that is all encompassing, and there needs to be accountability to ensure that the curriculum is being implemented across the board. Middle school, team members said, student needs have changed. And they were referring to connect with kids. That was, you know, very appropriate when it was first introduced, but things have changed. Things have evolved since COVID. So we need to make sure that we have curriculum to meet those needs. And then they also said that whatever curriculum is selected and piloted must meet the needs of tier one, two, and three. High school cohort members said, we must have alignment to what we are doing using as testing tools. So whether it's FastBridge, whatever we're using, there has to be alignment. And most importantly, and I heard this from high school teachers today, and I know you're there in the audience, and I heard you loud and clear, whatever we do, it must be implemented with fidelity. So next, I'm going to have Kylie Luckett, who was standing there at the podium. She's going to take just a few minutes to take you through our social emotional learning pilot. Kylie, take it away.
So as we went through the process to look at different curriculums, we decided on three to pilot. Those were looking at Second Step, Character Strong, and EduGuide. Second Step and Character Strong were elementary. Character Strong and EduGuide were our secondary. We had across all three pilots approximately 150 teachers that were involved, including some school-wide pilots. And the number of students impacted was about 1,500 that got to experience this new curriculum. Here's a breakdown of some of the key components and descriptions of the different curriculums that we looked at, as far as are they blended, are they online, what kind of resources do they have? Are they only tier one? Are they tier one and tier two? Is tier two an extra cost? And is there, what kind of focus is it? So for example, EduGuide is six through 12. It's completely online, and it's a self-guided process where students respond independently to prompts and questions. Okay, now we're back. And Second Step is pre-K through five. They have both digital options and like your traditional kind of kit options. And then Character Strong is PK, pre-K through 12 online. They have tier one and tier two. And one of the things that they highlight is that they are low burden and high-impact And now we are going to go through some highlights from the social emotional learning pilot. First, I'd like to welcome Miki Overton, who is an LVS counselor, to the mic to share what this looked like doing it online with our LVS students.
Hello. I'm Miki Overton. I'm one of the school counselors at Lawrence Virtual School. The other counselor and I implemented Character Strong this year with K through 12. We did push-ins twice a month with our elementary and once a month with our secondary. We are both proponents of this program and are advocating for it to be enacted this year or next year. We found the lessons engaging with this, lots of activities, discussions, music, videos, games. The kids were very active and involved. At the secondary level, we really liked how relevant the themes were, things like goal-setting, perspective-taking, community-building, worries, belonging. At the elementary level, we did things like a group story to build cooperation. We did, we went on a bear hunt to imagine ourselves being courageous, and we used iMessages to communicate honestly. One of our favorite things is it's very virtual friendly. There is a virtual component to the secondary, and everything, almost everything in the primary was also able to be used virtually as well. Character Strong has an abundance of material, and so it can be used and dispersed and shared between mental health professionals, counselors, and teachers. And there's plenty to go around to reinforce the theme for the month. There's also a component for parents to do activities at home with their students, and there's communication for parents as well. We had a couple of comments from teachers at LVS. Marsha Riggins, third grade teacher, said, I wanted to tell you how much the third graders and I enjoyed, or are enjoying having you in our Friday classes. This has definitely been a positive for the students, and I have really enjoyed teaming with you both. Vicky Case, first grade teacher, said, my class who attends morning meetings really enjoys your visits, and I know they are learning so much. For all these reasons, we would love to see this enacted for next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Miki. So next, you're going to get to hear from some of our amazing scholars. And so I had just interviewed them and asked them what their favorite parts of Character Strong were, their favorite words, character words, things that they had remembered. So we'll make sure we got our volume up.
I think they're pretty fun because you can learn about how you can make others feel better about themselves.
Awesome. So I know there's been lots of different words of the month. Do you have a favorite word of the month that you guys have had so far?
Perseverance.
Perseverance. Will you tell me why perseverance is your favorite?
I like perseverance because it means you can keep on pushing through hard things.
When I did this interview with her, that really hit me, just like the ability to say like, I can persevere, and it's the ability to push through hard things from a third grader. I know adults that don't have that much forethought, but for her to just on the cusp to be able to come up, that was really awesome. And now some of our middle schoolers from Southwest.
Confidence, integrity.
I think we have honesty and loyalty.
Courage.
Courage. And one of the things that was really powerful when I interviewed those students is, one of the students noted that it seemed like teachers cared more this year through their positive, through their Character Strong lessons. They had better relationships, which is obviously what we always want to make sure we're getting to.
I think they're pretty fun because you can learn about how you can make others feel better.
Okay, there we go. Sorry about that. Okay, next we have Stephanie Scarborough, who is an LHS health teacher, to come share that high school perspective.
I told Dr. Johnson that I do my best talks impromptu, but I promised her I would type it out. So anyhow, hi, Dr. Johnson. The health classes have been piloting Character Strong for this past year, and we found many strengths as well as some challenges. We also still have a lot to learn. We tried to commit to doing a Character Strong lesson at least once per week, and some of the strengths that we found include that it really does create community, and it highlights the individuality of the student, encourages conversation, it is engaging, and in this time, we need to engage. We have to entertain. We have to beat the screen. So this really helps us do that. It gets students out of their seats. So even though it is an online curriculum, a lot of the things require them to get up, talk, and it facilitates that. The activities are great for warm-up, wrap-ups, and class transitions, those 90-minute days when we need something to kind of break up the day. It's a great thing that you can plug in those places. And it also meets the criteria for culturally sustainable resource. So Heidi Woods, Michelle Lown, and I actually used some of these activities in our PD at LHS, and the teachers acted a lot like the kids. We're terrible students. They did not want to get up. They didn't want to do any of it, but of course they did because we all do that for each other and ended up being, I hope they had a good time. They seemed to be engaged and increased that connection and engagement just with us as a staff as well. The challenges are going to be similar to those that we have had with every other task we've had asked to do, which is the time. Building those genuine relationships takes time, intention, requires work, and an emotional commitment on the part of that teacher. Hopefully, this Character Strong tool will help us in this challenging journey of creating relationships with our kids. There's improvements to be made for sure, but this product is on the right track and is relevant for our kids today. Some of the relevant topics include perspective-taking, social belonging, and helpful supports. These all speak to the importance of socio-emotional learning, building relationships, and community. All of these are critical to our culture in our classrooms, our school, and in our district. So high school teachers are available if you have any further questions, but I think it's a great tool, and I would be on board to move forward as well.
Thank you. And last but certainly not least, we have Amanda Green, current Broken Arrow principal and future coordinator of Systems of Support.
Good evening. I will always jump on an opportunity to brag on our Broken Arrow staff and students and how they've really taken this pilot. We were able to have the opportunity to do the pilot building-wide. So this went in all of our classrooms. Our counselor utilized it as well. And so I just have a few things to share with you about that. When the CI3T triangle was up there, that foundation, that strong tier one, we were definitely looking for that as we worked through our redesign process at Broken Arrow to enhance our tier one specifically around social emotional development. And so we were super excited to get the building-wide pilot and be able to use it in all of our classrooms and spaces because it had that consistent language and focus building-wide. It's incredibly easy to use from an instructional standpoint that I know that some of the other presenters have also talked about, but it includes some of the high-yield strategies that are listed in our instructional playbook that we have here in the district, including cooperative learning, graphic organizers, essential questions, student discussion, formative assessment. It's all right there, and it's really grab-and-go. A substitute teacher could pick it up and be able to utilize it and have the same impact. The videos, quotes, teachable moments are all incredibly relevant and engaging for students. Our students were excited to, you know, have their Character Strong lessons. And it can be applied in all instructional settings. I was in a small group the other day of a teacher just working with six students, and there was three different opportunities that she was able to utilize, what some of the words of the month from our Character Strong lessons in that moment and in that lesson that was just 20 minutes long. So words like perseverance, courage right now, creativity is next month that we're excited about. They're relevant words that kids need to know about and want to engage in. At the elementary level, it connects perfectly with our morning meeting structure that all of our elementaries have in place across the district. There's that time for activity and sharing, and it's very robust. It has all of those resources there. Another great thing, Broken Arrow was a restorative justice and practice school this year, new for the elementary, and those are also embedded throughout the resource. So we found that to be helpful as well. And I just want to share an example. So this Wednesday, we are having our Eagle Nest, which was a part of our redesign process, but it's a little bit of a family model. And this month, our focus word is courage. And so we are taking what students have learned about courage, and this week on Wednesday in their groups, they're going to be making an eagle feather that's going to go on some big eagle wings. You might have seen them in our cafeteria. We're going to make a second set. But on these feathers, students are going to be using what they know about courage to make a courage statement for how they're going to be courageous as they transition to their new space in next school year. So, you know, with that transition of Broken Arrow students and Pinckney Elementary students fresh on all of our minds and at the front of all of our minds, I think an added benefit to moving forward with Character Strong would be that your Broken Arrow students and Pinckney students, this would give them something familiar, and it would also allow them to be leaders in their new spaces because they're going to know those things. They've really engaged with it this year. And so I look forward to continuing to support that process if we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Turn it over to you, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you. Kylie, what I'd like to do just for a moment, if you could talk just very quickly about EduGuide, I don't want to leave EduGuide and Second Step out. I know that you went back and you personally interviewed students and the teacher and things about, you know, the work and things that we did with EduGuide. So if you could do that, I would definitely appreciate that.
Absolutely. That's something we looked at at our middle school level, and it was utilized in several of the Avid classes, had the opportunity to buy them pizza and sit and hear their perspectives. I don't ever want to speak ill of a program, but they weren't very positive. A lot of it felt like there wasn't a connection that there, it lacked kind of the lesson, and it was difficult to kind of get through. It didn't give the robust lesson and that relationship building that we were hoping to get out of it. And currently in our district, our early childhood at Kennedy utilized Second Step. So we looked at how they utilize Second Step and that program and curriculum, as well as some of the other independent staff that have utilized Second Step to get feedback and see how it currently would compare to Character Strong.
Thank you so much for doing that, Kylie. I also want to say that with Second Step, Dr. Cook, who is the co-creator of Second Step, is now the Curriculum Development Director for Character Strong. So he has brought all of those years of experience of creating Second Step, and now he works full-time with Character Strong. So there is definitely a link there. So without further ado, we are ready now for the recommendation for the social emotional learning curriculum, and we are recommending to the board tonight, Character Strong. You will see the quote on the slide. It is directly from their website. And as I have had the great pleasure since last June of 2022 to work with the co-director, I speak to him multiple times during the month and for the past three weeks, probably three or four times a day, looking at all the pieces, learning more about it, so that when we come to you tonight, we would be able to have the details that you needed. Character Strong is more than a curriculum. It's a culture. It's a culture that is established within our schools, within our district, and we'll show you how we want to take that culture into the community. Next, the next slide focuses on why Character Strong. It focuses on, and you heard this from our highlights, and thank you, team members, for joining us tonight. It focuses on engagement and well-being and belonging. If you will look at the statistics at the bottom, it's in all 50 states, it's in 21 different countries, over 100,000 teachers have been trained, and 3.2 million-plus students have been positively impacted by this social emotional curriculum. Next, Kylie Luckett is going to go through and just kind of give you a couple of highlights that we want to share with you about social, about Character Strong.
So what you see at the top left is the primary, so the elementary curriculum. So you have be kind, be strong, be well with the different character themes that would go with that. Below that, you see their tier two or their small group intervention, which has four different groups that are already built in, which I think is something that the curriculums we've had previously have really lacked. It's been. It's been on mostly school counselors to create curriculum, come up with those group curriculums. So there's a coping skills group that focuses on internalizing emotions, a regulation group that focuses on externalizing emotions, a relationships group that focuses on social skills, and a self-management group that focuses on executive functioning. One of our speakers discussed the family aspect that I think is really amazing with Character Strong. So this is an example of a family character dare. So these are different challenges that go through the curriculum that are given. So there's staff challenges. There are admin challenges. There are student challenges. There's family challenges. So this one is call a family member or a friend that as a family you haven't talked to in a while. Try it out of the blue and surprise them by having everyone on the line say hello, catch up, and share why you've missed them. And so that's something that would go out to family and say, in Character Strong this week, this is what we're talking about. Here is a dare that we want to give to your family to try to participate in. Below that, you'll see the book titled Deep Kindness. It is written by the co-founder of Character Strong, Houston Kraft, who I was fortunate enough to see as a keynote speaker in the Kansas School Counseling Conference back in March and was completely dynamic, amazing. The book is high-quality. It is part of our hope to purchase copies for the district. Dr. Lewis has it up there to be able to do a book study. And it just, I don't know if you can read it, but it says, "A revolutionary guide for the way we think, talk, and act in kindness." And I think we would all agree that our world could use a little more kindness. So those are just some of the many aspects that this program has.
Thank you so much, Kylie. Next, we have Kristin Ryan coming to the podium to talk about Character Strong and the correlation with our results of our EPIC survey.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Johnson. And I really appreciated the teachers and staff tonight that have shared their input and their actual use in faculty meetings. That's exciting. I do want to make that connection with our EPIC survey data. So this is the slide that we're going to continue to really look at, those low satisfaction drivers, and that this type of SEL curriculum can help support. We know it's not going to do everything, but is a step in the right direction of supporting staff's mental and emotional health needs and providing a guaranteed and viable curriculum that can be easily accessible to support the SEL work that we're doing, K-12 and Tier One. So I think it's a nice connection. And again, we know there's a lot more that we need to do and will continue to work on, but this is definitely a step in the right direction.
Thank you so much, Kristin. Our next slide focuses on how we plan to expand to beyond just the walls of the school. Our goal is to expand Character Strong into our community. We have partnered with Lawrence Schools Foundation. What a great joy anytime it is to work with Dina Johnston. But when this was brought to her, I mean, she welcomed this with open arms. Before we had even finished the meeting, she had already scheduled us to speak at the foundation upcoming meeting in May, which Kylie Lucky and I will do so. But we're going to expand our character focus, our themes for the month, out into our community so we can truly focus on that kindness and how we, just as an entire city, community, just focus on social-emotional skills, and that part will be very, very exciting. On the next slide, I wanted to take just a moment to give you a cost comparison. If we had gone, if the vote had been to go with Second Step and EdUGuide. And before I go into this, I do want to say that it was a unanimous vote for Character Strong. To have a PK-12 curriculum is something that is very strong, and to be able to build upon each level is very powerful. But if we had done a cost comparison for Second Step, PK-5, and then EdUGuide, 612, please keep in mind, these are two different systems. So students would have had to have learned a whole new process once they got to at least the secondary level. But you see the price on the screen, which is right at $256,000. For Character Strong, once again, a PK-12 curriculum, we're at right at $267,000. So I wanted to be able to give you that cost comparison. The next slide is our recommendation and the monies that go along with it. Character Strong cost and funding source. The startup quote that has been provided to us by the co-creator is for years one and two, which is the startup, will be $206,000. The funding source will be our ESSR III monies. One of the key areas for our ESSR funding is social-emotional learning. So we're so excited to be able to tap into those funding, into that funding source to be able to support this recommendation. The renewal quote, which is for years three, four, and five, is for $60,000. And the total five-year cost to facilitate this curriculum with every component is $267,000. And please keep in mind that everything that we do is online. However, you do have a choice to print, to use many different types of resources to be able to get the information out to our families, to get the information and engage our students. There's so many, so many parts there, so we're very excited about that. On the next step slide, you will see that there are multiple steps there. We are not going to go through all those steps. We're going to hit the two that we have highlighted. So Kylie, if you want to talk about Lawrence Public School Reads, I'll let you jump in now.
So one of the many great things with Character Strong is they have like a book library of recommendations that align with each theme and each lesson. And so it will be our hope to go out into our community, go out into our schools, and have books read aloud that can then be shared with students, with families, with that encouragement of watch this together during dinner. Read this together. Listen to this before bedtime. We threw out some names like Having Dr. Lewis, Maybe Coach Self, Mayor, Different Representatives, Different Parents, Different Staff, to really just encourage and inspire that love of reading, specifically social-emotional learning through reading.
Thank you so much, Kylie. The next part that I want to talk about is the Character Strong Summer Conference. One of the things that we know and we know for sure is that we have to be very mindful and very precise in rolling out this pre-K-12 curriculum. It cannot happen by chance. We have to be, once again, we have to make sure that everything is in place. So to do so, if this is approved tonight, you will see on the screen, the work begins on tomorrow morning with involving our social-emotional learning committee, that the original 42 that showed up at the meeting when the all-call went out, and putting pieces together to be able to help us move forward. Also, ensuring that teachers have access before the school year is out. If this is approved tonight, Character Strong has given us a three-week window for every staff member to be able to get a special code and have a chance to go in and explore this curriculum before everything begins. We're excited about the July 12th, 11th, and 12th conference. We are bringing six of the national consultants to come in and work with us here in Lawrence Public Schools. So the conference will be open to staff members, open to students, open to family members, open to board members to be able to really work within this culture. And then we will have our back-to-school kickoff, which will involve different things that will take place at the individual schools. It will be a part of our convocation, once again, throw this out properly. So there's a lot there. I know we've gone over a few minutes. It's very exciting to be able to share this information. At this time, we will pause for any questions that you may have.
Okay, Becca.
Well, first of all, I just want to say that I am super excited to hear about this curriculum. I think that it will be really influential in helping to de-stigmatize conversations about mental health in our classrooms and schools, which is just amazing. I know that one concern that teachers brought up was time being an issue. Is there any plan to like help prepare teachers for this? I know that the training will mostly do that, but just to help them with that aspect of time?
Yes, I will jump in. And Kylie, if there's anything else you want to add, please do so. Thank you so much for asking that question and making those comments. One of the things that we will do is sit down and determine really that scope and sequence and what is going to be the focus as we begin next school year. There is so much information in this curriculum. You cannot do it all. You cannot do every single component of it, which is really exciting because it gives you something, you know, to begin with. This is where we're starting with year one, year two, year three, year four, and year five. So I've heard that same concern about the time. The beauty of Character Strong is that you have the autonomy to be able to decide, do I have 10 minutes today to facilitate a lesson? Do I have 20 minutes? Do I have 30 minutes? Do I have 40 minutes? So that time element will be taken into account. And one of the things that's going to be interesting, it will be different at each grade level. So at, or each grade of a span. Elementary, pre-K, it may look one way. Elementary will look another way, and then you have middle school and then high school. One thing that we know for sure is that across the board, it will be the same thing. So if it is respect at pre-K, it will be respect at high school as well as in the community.
So a follow-up question to that, just looking at it a slightly different way. So if you look at it from a perspective of a brand-new teacher to our district, you know, we have restorative practice. We have CI3T. We have Character Strong. And that's all before they ever look at specific curriculum to whatever layer, whatever level they're coming into the district. So in some ways, this is yet another program that they have to learn before they ever start to teach. And so from my professional situation, I hear it from nurses all the time of, when you're going to let me just take care of a patient and stop piling on things that you need me to do that have nothing to do with a patient? And it's not equivalent. I'm not trying to make it equivalent, but I'm asking, this is yet another program that we're asking teachers to spend time and to do. And how are you going to balance this program with all the other programs that we're asking teachers to spend time doing that isn't teaching?
GR, I think that's a great question. One of the things that I want to say to that is that social-emotional learning is already part of our CI3T framework. Remember, it has the academic piece at the bottom. We also have the behavioral, and we have the social-emotional. We already have a social-emotional curriculum that teachers have already said, this is not working. When I came into the district in 2019, the first thing I heard about Connect with Kids is it was not working. That was 2019. We have tried to keep moving forward with that all of these years past that particular time. Social-emotional learning, it will not be one more thing. It's a part of the work that we are already doing. I think one of the things that's going to be important is to make sure that with our new teachers and when we introduce this, to make sure that new teachers know about this and know about the different pieces of it, how to utilize it. We'll make sure that they have codes so that they can go around and look into the curriculum and things as well. So I think that, you know, once again, it's not one more thing. It's part of the work that we're doing. Remember, CI3T is the house where everything lives that we do in Lawrence Public Schools that deals with academic, behavioral, and social-emotional. I don't know if, I can't see the podium, so I don't know if anybody else is there to speak.
I appreciate that answer, but I would counter that it is actually one more thing that you're going to ask them to do because they're not doing it today. So I just ask that you be mindful of that as you move forward and be mindful that you're asking them to spend time that they're not spending today working on lessons and working on Character Strong things that no one outside the pilot has been doing. So I just, I just be mindful, I just ask that you be mindful when you frame it, that you don't frame it that you're not adding one more thing because you actually are adding one more thing.
And I think that is, I definitely hear that. One of the things that I want to add is we are wanting to be creative in how we do this because currently, it has been in those health classes. So it has been very focused, but we are looking at kind of different schedules that how could we rotate this through? So I don't just think of social-emotional learning or Character Strong as health, or I don't just think of it as my English class, that it's rotating through. So you know what? Maybe I'm teaching one lesson, a quarter, based on the rotation and how we do that. So really sharing that load. And that's the great thing about the way the program is designed is you can do that. We can, they give some templates for different scopes and sequences and how you can implement it, but it is very flexible. So, you know, one week I might have it with my math teacher. The next week, I might have it second hour with my science teacher. There's different things that we're going to look at and make sure we're getting staff feedback on so we can incorporate it in a way that will be useful. I really believe in this curriculum. I also know that it doesn't matter how great a curriculum is if it's just kind of put on there and said, this is something you have to do. We have to get that buy-in, and I really believe that we are in a place to get that buy-in and take away where, take some time where in their class currently, you are doing peer mediating and you're solving problems and you're addressing things that if we can focus on and build these skills as part of our social-emotional learning curriculum, that's going to take some of those other things away. Same for our mental health staff. The more resiliency skills, the more we can talk about mental health and have everyone doing that, the more it frees up our mental health staff to really focus and work with our students better.
And Kylie, I want to also add that, just reminder that remember, Connect with Kids would go away. So in turn, teachers will be doing something different. So, I mean, social-emotional learning is already there with a curriculum that for right now, for the needs that our children have, it's not working. So that would come away. And then remember that the more skills, social-emotional learning skills that students learn about, that they internalize, that they are applying in their own lives, that really frees up more time for instruction in the classroom. So it meets not just social-emotional, but it also meets that academic need as well. But thank you, GR. That is noted.
Hi, this is Kate. So what I'll initially say is for this product, because of the consistency from pre-K through 12, as well as the support from educators through this presentation, what I do have concerns on, and I wanted to kind of dive in a little bit, was the more of the budget and planning side of this. This is not the first time we've had a pilot product that has came to the board after like a year saying, hey, can we receive funding for this? And so this is just something, wanting to perhaps keep us mindful of when we are looking at piloting programs. Can we be able to kind of project how much it's going to cost? So it's part of our budget and planning once we get to this stage, so it's not kind of a... I will say, yes. So that's not a question. It's just more of a comment. But my question is, so it sounds like Dr. Johnson, you said that the Connect for Kids is coming away. So in my mind, I'm thinking that that is a budget line item that we're currently paying for. And then because we would be bringing this in, that would be taking this budget line item. Is that correct for cost for curriculum?
Well, this is just a little bit different because this would be paid for with ESSR funding for this particular area. I don't, Cindy, would you mind coming to address just that part about ESSR and how we are able to use that funding?
Yeah, because I saw it in the, as Cindy's coming up here. We are for the ESSR funding for years one and two, and then the district is funding to pay for years three, four, and five. And by math, that's $182,000. So I was like, is that taking the budget line item for something we're already paying for? So I'm just trying to figure out how.
I don't know if that would be replacing other curriculum that we wouldn't pay for in the future. What, so they can speak to that. What we're doing is getting as much of the items that we can use upfront to start off the program as possible. And so that those first couple of years are costing more proportionately. And then once the program is up and going, it's just maintaining the year-to-year cost for that. So it is proportionally lower on the out-years.
Okay. And do we, do we by chance know if this is going to be an increase of cost that we currently are having in year three, four, and five? I know, I mean, I'm just thinking about, I'm not sure how it's currently budgeted within the curriculum line item.
I do not know on the curriculum side of that what the costs are. So if Patrick... Oh, okay. Thank you.
I don't, I don't have exact amounts, but we currently pay for the use of Connect with Kids for middle school and high school, and then we have Positive Action at K through um, K through five, and I'm not exactly sure about elementary. The amounts aren't, is the same, and we could get those numbers to you, but all that will go away, and then this one expense would replace that.
And we don't currently have anything for our pre-K as it relates to something like this, is that?
I think they use Second Step. They use Second Step, and they're paying for that like in a different, so it'll all come together now here. So there would be three things coming off.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
And and um, Kay, I would like to also state that for years three, four, and five, these are the numbers, the, the, this is the quote, and there's no increase in there, and that three, four, and five, that's $60,000 for those three years, not $60,000 for each year.
Okay, okay. That changes the perception. Thank you.
I say that, and I wanted to go back and clarify. So, so twenty-some thousand dollars um for each year, if you will.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Dr. Johnson. That's, that's really helpful.
And if we look to kind of any of our other curriculums and you compare costs, this is definitely a more affordable, especially when you consider that Character Strong allowed, their typical pilot is 30 days, um and Character Strong let us pilot for the whole year at no cost. So this has not been a cost to the district yet, um yet it's had a high impact.
And I appreciate you making that comment, Carla, cuz I was waiting to make that, and you know, it just came down to going back each time and making a request to extend um the pilot because so many people were interested, so many people were enjoying, can we go beyond the 30 days? Okay, can, can I, can I get a semester? Yes. At, you know, almost semester. Can, can we go to March? So when we're at March, I went back and I asked again, can we go to the end of the school year? Every single time was yes.
Yeah. Kelly? Any other questions?
I, I, go ahead. Go ahead. Uh, this is Carol. I mean, I'm, I'm with G R. I am a, I'm, I'm a mental health professional, like this is what I do in my day job, but I, and I also serve on uh the Governor's Committee for Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Committee, but I'm concerned that, just like G R, that we, I'm, I'm concerned about the cost of reinventing the will, and I don't, I don't want the restorative justice practices and agreements that we have with KIP Core to go by the wayside.
It will not.
And this report almost looks identical to the report that we saw on June 14, 2021. But you know, I am for this, and it, it sounds great.
Yeah. Um, KIP Core will not go away, and I'll work with, we're, we're doing with restorative practices. We just um finished up our final um meeting where we come through, come in and we brainstorm um things that we're going through within our buildings. Uh, we just finished up that meeting last Wednesday. Uh, we're already working with KIP Core to finalize our dates and our training for this summer. Um, that work continues. One of the things that I said a couple of months ago is this information um that um, you know, that, that we have right now, especially as it relates to restorative practices, will, you know, um, will, will continue on. KIP Core is allowing us to do our training just a little bit different because we, there was so much um shifting in our district that's going on right now. We wanted to make sure the people that were training in levels two and three, that those people are really here for the entire year. So instead of training in May, in April and May like we did last year, they're allowing us to train at the very beginning of September, so that we have those people in, in our school district and things um for the, for the entire year. Um, we're really excited about the, the, um, really the focus of restorative practices within this Character Strong um curriculum. That is so very important. This presentation that you're seeing right now has never been given before. We, in 2021, we never talked about Character Strong because we didn't even know about um Character Strong. We learned about Character Strong last summer when um, when team members came together and um started researching curriculums from Castle. Castle has a um, um, a databank that you can go through and look at different curriculums, and then we also use what um, the, the What Works Clearing House. Multiple, multiple hours were spent by those different cohorts looking at curriculums, and those team members sitting there saying, this is not gonna work. Their, their team members are saying, okay, let's, let's look at this one. And then when you see the cost that was so just absolutely uh beyond what we could afford, we had to come back, come and look at some different things. So this is a brand-new presentation.
Right. I, I didn't say it was identical, but it looked very similar to the, the report that we saw on June 14, 2021, just for clarification. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
I just wanted to uh share that I'm actually really excited to see the Tier Two support, lesson support, particularly for elementary schools. Having seen how some of those groups have had to function and the extra work that counselors are taking on to create those, I think it actually, that's actually an area where, um from my personal experience as a parent, it looks to me like there would be time-saving for those staff members in providing those Tier Two supports to students in that small group setting. So I think that's a nice benefit of this particular program. Um, it's not very often that we get a curriculum recommendation that's unanimous like this, which I think also speaks highly of um the strength of the pilot. So um that's really all I wanted to share.
Oh, yes. Just a couple of things. I'm, I might have missed it. I was busy writing some notes, cuz I, I am excited about the SEL. Um, one question, Kylie, if you could just go over quickly who was part of the SEL committee? I think you went over it, but I didn't hear what you said, um and if parents and teachers are involved in that, or community members were involved in that SEL committee. And the second um observation, I guess, uh, not limiting the SEL Castle curriculum just to teachers, um but to longstanding programs like Native American Student Services, to see if they would be able to um implement this with the student, with the native students that they work with in that program. I know that they, there's a space for them on the EAC Council, but often I see lots of success if you go directly to that space um and meet them where they're at, just, and I, and I have heard of Castle um being implemented in other tribal schools and communities too, and it's been really successful.
Absolutely. I think that makes a lot of sense uh with the sponsors and coming in, and they, they will have access and can um pull activities, pull lessons, pull different things for their, for their meetings, um share out with families. I think that would be just another um level, and like hearing it from just another person in that group would be great. And when it ca- when it comes to the committee that was formed last summer, um I was a part of that committee as an elementary school counselor, that was the role that I was in, and so that had went out May-ish, maybe?
In May. Was it out in May?
Okay. Um, and for volunteers, and I believe Dr. Johnson said that there were 42 um staff members who had come together. We met in the boardroom um in elementary, middle, and high school groups and um went through this process. And moving forward, we're going to have um dedicated teams from each building, um made up of staff to kind of come back to focus on our fidelity, focus on the implementation and what we're doing.
And let me also add that um those, that um social-emotional committee will also involve um our, um, we'll have, we'll have business partners, um representation, there will be um parents' representation. Um, well, I, I heard you ask about NASS. Um Kenny is a member of the Native American Students, um, he's a, he's a, um, the coordinator of the Native American Student Service um, such a, but, but also what I want you to, to remember that he's a part of Team I E B. So any conversations that we are having um within our weekly meetings, Kenny is a part of those um conversations, and yes, NASS will definitely have a part um in the work and things that we're doing in these um areas.
I would just say, I would just appreciate us having this conversation, even considering uh a program that addresses social-emotional learning, considering some of the backlash that many school districts are facing, that they can't even bring this type of conversation in our boardroom, in their boardroom. Uh, but the fact of the matter, we are um asking great questions about a program that we know will make our students um even greater human beings, and this just provides our teachers with another tool in their toolbox or resource uh to teach the whole child. That's why I never wanted to uh look at programs and tell teachers to teach this program with fidelity. No. Do you teach students with fidelity, using this as a tool and a resource or another arrow in your quiver?
There's no additional questions. Board member like to make a motion?
I can make a motion. I move, I move the Board of Education to approve the purchase of a new social-emotional curriculum, Character Strong Startup for Grades PK through 12, for $206,972.40 to be paid for using ESAR III funding for years one and two, and district funding to pay for the Character Strong renewal at $60,739.20 for years three, four, and five.
This is Kay, I'll second.
Kadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Van?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero.
Thank you. I see that our boundary committee folks are ready for our next item, but we're gonna take a five-minute recess, um, and we will resume in the board meeting at 7:56 P. M. Thank you.
This session? Our next item is the Boundary Advisory Committee recommendation, and I would like to invite um Dr. Larry Engelbrich, Chief Operations Officer, to the podium to, and along with Dr. Lewis, to introduce this item and our guest.
We are excited to bring back uh some recommendation, or a recommendation to the board. We certainly appreciate the board uh engaging in feedback and giving us some good quality feedback to take back to our Boundary Advisory Committee uh meetings on the 12th and the 19th. Uh, we took that feedback um to heart and are ready to present a proposal to you tonight. So we have Dr. Larry Engelbrich and Rob Schwartz as well.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lewis, members of the board. I'd like to begin this evening by just highlighting some points through the year. We may not realize this, but it was almost nine months ago that this process began with the Futures Planning Committee, and RSP began working with us through that process at that time. Over the last two months, RSP has worked directly with the Boundary Advisory Committee in taking input from the Futures Planning Committee, from community, and from members of that committee, and developing and refining concepts of boundaries for elementary schools next year. I'd like to take a moment to step back and say thank you to some people. Of course, all of the community members that have provided feedback through the process of both committees, all of the members of the Futures Planning Committee. I'd also like to thank the members of the Boundary Advisory Committee, community members, staff members, and board members who have met quite frequently over the past two months to bring us to the point that we have a proposal that's been reviewed by the board, taken input from the board...
They currently reside, as you move across that row, you can see where they would be attending with this proposed plan. Again, this is moving those ELL students either if they're in neighborhood hubs, saying they're still at Schwagler. So what this doesn't get at is some of the attend function. So if you go back nine months ago, 10 months ago, when we presented the enrollment analysis, remember, we gave you numbers of reside and attend, and that got at the flow of all of the intra-district programs. What we focused on this boundary process was residing in the ELL students, and then how that transfer process works will play out in the process that you currently have in your system. We had the district run the free and reduced lunch because of the special categorization of those students. We don't have that data. What we were trying to analyze here was how do things change with the way the buildings are programmed now and could be programmed in this option? So one of the things that we started to look at was what buildings would be over the 50% free and reduced lunch? Because that starts to give the categorization for Title I status. And so the buildings that would be at that 50% for next year are Cordley, Hillcrest, New York, Prairie Park, Schwagler, and Woodlawn. So this gets us to the visual of what you see in this recommended plan. My mouse works. All right, so the area that was in Pinkney, you can see my hand crossing across the top here, is Second Street. So all of the area north of Second Street comes over to Deerfield. This area that's represented, that was in Cordley, south of about 11th Street and west of Mass, this is all that's now being assigned over into New York. The other area that we saw changes that I documented earlier was the area south of the 10 bypass and west of 59. We had an area that was kind of a transportation-focused, coming down the spine of 59 into the west. That was at Sunflower. All of this now is at Langston Hughes. Those are the changes from the last time. That's my last slide.
Can I ask a question about the... You can't see it on here, but I'm assuming that that Langston Hughes boundary is actually contiguous because it continues around the west side of Clinton Lake?
Correct. If we look on that inset that's on...
Oh, I see.
I forgot to tell you what's on the page here. So the inset on the bottom left gives you the district perspective beyond the zoomed-in extent that you see in this map. So with that, I open up to questions, comments from the board.
Questions?
Hi, thank you for coming tonight and getting here safely. That's most important. My question, I have a couple. There are clarification questions. So Dr. Engelbrich, you had, when we were going over the concepts, there was a note about transportation possibly being provided or not being provided, and I wanted to get clarification on that. And it seemed like that just kind of covered that McDonald concern and not necessarily the 23rd Broken Arrow concern. So I just want to try to get some clarification on that. Thank you, Ron, for coming up.
Good evening, Ron May, Director of HR and Transportation. Yes, we had even before we were asked to make the secondary boundary changes, I was already looking at the potential of busing students. By making this change the way we did, it leaves right at about 40 students, which is a bus. And we have some kids who are already qualified to ride in that area. So we would be able to just bus that with a larger bus. So when Dr. Engelbrich said a nominal fee, it's not even necessarily... It's going to be a little bit more than what we would normally pay for a bus, but it's not going to even be an added route. We already have that route running to Pinkney right now. We just have it running on a smaller bus. So we'll just make a larger bus, and we'll pay a little bit extra for the bus. But it won't be... It won't even be... It'll be less than $2,000 or $3,000, most likely, over the cost of what the bus costs us right now.
And on that map, I love maps. They can be great, they can also not be very helpful. Can you kind of point that out again, which students are being now bused? Just so I can see a visual of that.
Sure, so let me look here, make sure... Okay. So...
This group?
The...
Okay.
Yeah, sorry. Help me try here. Okay, so we're talking about this pocket right in here, correct? Is that right? Is that where I'm talking? Oh, sorry, right here. There we go. So this is that little pocket right here, and there's a little bit of housing in here, and we have three or four students in there that are already qualified riders. So we can keep them... You know, they're going to... They're going to be qualified for whichever building they're assigned to. And so then, this whole little area right here contains about 40 students. It's going to go to Deerfield, that's what the thing shows. So that, you know, a big bus is a 71 passenger. So we can definitely get 40 students on that single bus and take them over. There may be some parents that choose to drive their kids, and that's fine. But the point is that we would have pickup points for those students so they can ride.
Okay. And then, thank you. And then, the other question I had, there was... I got a little confused when we were talking about the ELL students. And I was like, wait a minute, are they now going to homeschools? Are they still going to Hillcrest? And wait a... That was very confusing, so I'm just wanting some clarification, please.
I will try to clarify, and if I do it wrongly, Dr. Engelbrich will jump in. So ELL students, so I'll go to the projections. So when we're looking at the projections, we first said if you reside in the district, you go here. Then if you're in an ELL hub site, and you're now in that new boundary, which is the description of some of the Broken Arrow kids, it would be at Schwagler, we've assigned you in Schwagler because it's an ELL neighborhood hub.
Okay.
If you're at one of the cluster sites, like Hillcrest in general, and your boundary has changed based on where you reside are, we moved you into the boundary where you are currently receiving your cluster site services.
Okay.
So that's why they're in that number, and how we could program some of those cluster site buildings where there's going to be more kids than what's in the neighborhood.
Okay, so no changes to the students that are currently attending their ELL hub, unless their school has been impacted by a boundary change?
Unless they're assigned to an ELL hub school, which Schwagler would be one of them. Then you would be identified being in Schwagler. And if you wanted to go, let's say you're at Hillcrest now, you would go through the process of transferring from neighborhood, ELL, Schwagler, hub to the cluster site at Hillcrest.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a follow-up question to that. So this is probably not something you can answer, so I'll ask the district folks. So what I heard was that some of our students that are currently at Cordley or Hillcrest will need to now transfer to remain in that building, go through that process. Who will be assisting those parents in identifying the need to go through that transfer process, and who will make sure that it's done in their language?
The first person on that list, Julie Boyle, will be putting together our communication plan to all of our community members. And then the ELL staff and administration will assist in making sure all of those individual students are contacted and provided support in that process.
And it's outlined in Power School what language they prefer to receive communication in.
Additional questions? Okay, go ahead.
One of the things I didn't hear was in regards to our exemptions. And so I was wondering if someone can brief us on that, just so we can have that front of our mind. Families with siblings, the fourth and third grade. I can't remember what it was. Thank you.
Yes, again, that is for our scholars that are rising, fourth and fifth grade scholars, and their younger siblings can apply for transfer and be exempted. Term we used to use, we don't use anymore, but they can be exempted. We do recommend that, you know, not expanding those exemptions beyond this because, keep in mind, the goal of these boundary shifts is kind of to balance our enrollment. So those individuals that are exempt, again, will be those rising fourth and fifth graders and their younger siblings. Did that answer the question?
Yeah, it does. Kelly? One of the themes I heard from that site council visit to Liberty Memorial, and actually also at my visit with New York Elementary, so both of those schools are impacted in one way or another by recent decisions, was around the communication plan and the rollout of that. So as a parent opens up the paper tomorrow and sees that their student is going to a new school, there is hopefully immediate communication around how to consider a transfer or some education that can come from principals within the building. Is that... That will be part of the communication plan, correct?
Yes, all that information will be in communication.
I think just to piggyback on that, too...
Julie's coming up to add some additional information.
I think just to piggyback on that, too, you know, as we look at transfers, you know, right now, the transfer portal is down as we were waiting to make this decision. And I think, you know, whenever this decision gets made, you know, as we... Before we turn that transfer portal on, I think it would be, as Kelly alluded to, as we think through some of those potential questions and those potential scenarios, to really be mindful of the various... What those different scenarios are? Because we have several groups now that would be requesting transfers. We have legacy students, we have former Pinkney and Broken Arrow students, we have students that don't qualify for legacy but may want to request a transfer. We have just regular transfers. And so I think it's looking at those groups. It's how are we going to prioritize those transfers? What's the deadline for the transfer? Can any of those groups transfer and kick off the process of creating a new section in their new school? I think it's looking at all of those things and being mindful, and who gets priority? How do we prioritize those things? And being proactive in the communication and when they go to the website to get the transfer form, answering some of those questions up front so it's clear and transparent communication, I think would be important, too.
Hello, Julie Boyle, Director of Communications. This is a very complex situation with a lot of different variables. Our transition team has already been meeting. We met this morning, I believe, for the third time, maybe fourth, and discussed this very thing, and are concerned that inaccurate information be communicated. So we asked the elementary lead principal to share with all elementary principals to please wait to share information until we get the data files from RSP and Associates. And then our data team can cross-reference who is already on a transfer at their school because they will not be affected. Their transfer remains in place. And then we will have accurate information about specific families and how these changes will affect them so the district can communicate that along with the transfer request form, the exemption information, any transportation information, any... Anything we want to share with them about their newly assigned attendance center, the hours, the boys and girls club hours, family nights, parent nights that the schools are all planning, their transition teams are planning, and also student tours that they have planned, the dates for those. So it may not be immediately, as immediately as folks would like. I got three or four emails today asking for the information, and the board had not even met to approve the boundaries yet. So I understand people wanted this information three months ago, but we want to make sure we get them accurate information, that we don't tell someone, "Your new area is here, and then, oops, we were wrong, it's actually here." These are families that are already frustrated and anxious and fearful, and it's important to get them accurate information. We will do it as quickly as possible, but I really, in this case, am more interested about the accuracy than I am about the speed. I think that we will share with families in the interim while we're waiting for those data transfers to happen, that we are waiting to get accurate information to them, and we'll give them an estimate of when we might be able to do that. And we're hoping that would be possible by either the end of this week or early next week.
So the beginning of May-ish?
We would love to do an April K. Everyone is working very hard. Everyone is very anxious to help. All of our principals and our transition teams at the schools are ready to welcome, they're excited about activities, they're excited about invitations. We're trying to hold them back just a little bit right now so we get accurate information so they don't invite someone, and then they come to an event and they realize that's not going to be their school. We don't want to create more negative experiences, only positive.
I have a question, Dr. Lewis, that ties into something that GR mentioned. So he mentioned the timing of granting transfers and deciding staffing and FTE. I think there's some confusion about which students count toward how many FTE a building will get assigned and when those students have to be assigned to that building for it to count, especially as it relates to transfers. And as we've had a lot of discussion at the board table about our desire to be more flexible with our transfers throughout this situation, one concern I have heard is that buildings are afraid they won't get staff for the transfers that they accept or that they already have. So could we just clarify that, please?
Yes.
Yeah, we've had a lot of conversation about this. And so, I mean, past practice has been that you receive FTE for the students in your school boundaries. And then the transfers all happen. A principal, once everything gets settled, then we would look at... A principal would look and see what space do they have left in their building in terms of a certain grade, yeah, certain class, to accept any incoming transfers. So that's how we've done it in the past.
If... If we wanted to do that process but also address the concerns around transfers, in your opinion, would that require building contingency positions back into the budget?
I think for sure, in terms of having some flexible FTE. We had the... We've been having the discussion, too, about our exempt students in terms of just counting them. What are those numbers going to look like? You know, we don't have an idea yet. How many are we talking? And is... How close will a school be for students that are going to stay? We don't have a feel for that yet. And that also will be an indicator of we're going to need some more staffing.
When typically... I feel like I should know the answer to this question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. When typically do you make that decision and communicate to a building, this is how many FTE you're going to have?
They've been wanting it definitely here for the last month.
Last week, right?
Yes. So...
In a year that's not this year, when would you have typically told them that?
Definitely, I mean, the goal from my experience as a building principal is that you know going into spring break your numbers. I mean, that's a nice... So that you can, in terms of master schedule planning and hiring, that you have an idea, this is what I need going prior to spring break. So that... Because when you come back, it's just such a fast pace until the end of the school year. So we are behind, and we recognize that. So...
That's part of the work, too, is when things are finalized, hopefully tonight, we can have a definite answer because some of our parents kind of know and have an idea of what possible schools. I was talking to a Pinkney parent over the weekend, and she's letting her child decide because some of his friends are going to school A or some of them are going to school B. And so, once we come to a decision tonight, we'll know, and then we'll have an opportunity for parents to... GRU's legacy, don't confuse people, exempt. We'll know with those families that want to apply for a transfer to be exempt. That will help us also with balancing and knowing how many students we have. But the other transfers are contingent upon space available.
Can I ask a follow-up question? I have a follow-up question around contingency. So previously, when we removed contingency instructors, which I think happened last budget, maybe... Or is it more, is it a couple of years ago that we...
It's been at least three.
Three, okay. So previously, that was an additional line, like in terms of, for the number of staff that we would be bringing in, and it had to do with class size particularly. If you utilize contingency teachers in this regard, it's different. So if you had like a lot of transfers coming into a building, am I incorrect in saying that you could... Not that I'm suggesting we move teachers around without being thoughtful about that, but you could potentially move staff around in a different way than we previously used contingency? There wouldn't necessarily be as much of an additional cost, I guess, is what I'm wondering.
Potentially, I think the other competing factor is you have principals wanting contingency to not have multi-grade, you know? So there's these extra... And/or reducing class size, 612. So I think just probably, like for us, direction to where to prioritize.
Okay.
That, because there are a lot of requests right now.
Kelly, I think what you're asking is the staff following the students, the staff we already have allocated following the students.
Yes, because we have staff that are moving now, if that would be a potential. I can say, speaking on the... So that's what I was asking about. Speaking about contingency teachers in general for modifying class sizes or dealing with hotspots. Speaking just for myself, as a board member, that is something at a different... Maybe at a different meeting, I would like to consider for budgeting in the future. I do think it's been a loss to not have that for our elementary buildings. So not to confuse the matter, I was asking what Dr. Lewis clarified.
Gotcha.
I appreciate that explanation. I think I... The whole conversation makes me wonder about... Because there are districts in places that have much more open transfer policies than we even have. And so it makes me wonder about how they manage that from a staffing perspective. I think I might be interested in having a follow-up conversation about that or just learning more about it. Because I do really... I hear the concern that we... Our transfer policy doesn't work the way that it maybe should because of this issue.
And I'll tell you how it typically works in other districts. We're having worked in two other districts and talking to superintendents here in Kansas that are doing it. They pull it from their reserve funds. They pull the... Just they have that healthy of a reserve fund that they can pull funds there to cover that cost.
Okay. That explains it. All right, thank you for that information. Other questions?
I don't really have a question, but I remain concerned about class sizes. Particularly on, like the seven orange squares on Slide 7. The majority of those being on the west side of town, but town, side of town, regardless of that, and is concerned about class sizes.
So could we maybe... Could someone speak to the class size chart? Because I think I read it differently than you did, Erica. I think what that... What I thought what that was showing is that that's how many sections of 25 students. So all the class sizes that they're assuming... This is how I read it. They're assuming, for example, for Cordley, that you would have... With a 25-student ratio, you'd have 2.4 classes of kindergarten, 2.6 classes of first grade. And when you add up that line all the way across, that's how they get to their ultimate staffing. And then we, because we have said to buildings, you get to decide how you're going to address that staffing and place it. Then that becomes a building decision about how to... But so the hotspots, the ones that are in orange are showing where they have more than the assumed number of sections per building. That's how I was reading it.
Right. Class sizes are still a concern. Like 25 in a class, that's kindergartners, first... Like, that's large. And...
Okay.
It was an observation, and I've been consistent about that from the beginning of our budget conversations, that our class sizes are too large.
Okay. I think I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Appreciate that clarification. Thank you. I guess I would just like to confirm, was I reading the chart correctly?
You absolutely read it correctly.
Okay.
And the other way to look at this, this kind of sets the benchmark. If you want class sizes smaller, you need to change your class size, right?
The ratio.
So if you lower that to 20, then that changes some of the outlook. But you can't lower the class size without that part being done in your formulas.
Right, and I know that. I realize that.
And for an example, if you change the 4 or 5 class sizes from 30... If we would just use this year's numbers from 30 to 27, we would have had five less multi-grade 4 or 5. So I know you said looking at the 25, but that's an idea of... I mean, it just takes quite a bit to move it, but...
In other words, you would have had... You would have needed five additional FTE.
We would have had five less 4 or 5 multi-grades if the ratio would have been at 27 instead of 30. So I think we have 19 or 18... 19 multi-grade classrooms. So if we would have changed the ratio to 27, we would have just had... We would have had five less, we would have had 14.
But we would have needed five more teachers.
Yes, we would.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. I just wanted to make sure I was...
Yes.
Understanding that correctly. Okay. Any other thoughts or comments? Then I think that we would be ready for a motion on this item.
Comment?
Oh, that's right, thank you. Thank you. We do have public comment. I really appreciate you reminding me. We have two boundary-related public comments this evening. And then, do you... Elise, do you have confirmation on the third that you were waiting on?
I think she's good. I reached out to her.
Okay, okay. Then we have two public comments, Marcia Riggins and then Michelle Sommons. Marcia, if you'd like to come to the podium, please. Thank you.
While I appreciate and empathize for all of these teachers on that list up there, there is an elementary that is missing, which serves 153 students within the city. There is an elementary that is missing, which serves 153 students within the city of Lawrence and the boundaries of Lawrence. And that is the Lawrence Virtual Elementary Academy. And so I'm kind of curious as to where those numbers fall because they attend, they're on an attendance area somewhere up there because they live here, but they are also marked there, but we are not represented up there. If the district understood the boundaries that are at LVS, which are Colorado, Missouri, Nebraska, and Oklahoma, and paid a little more attention to what families need and are looking for, we at LVS could be part of your solution when it comes to funding and growing enrollment while also bringing in students who are marginalized in their community, who have been discriminated against, bullied, and are not going to school where they should because it is not a safe place. And that is overall a theme of this district, but seems to get lost when we look at the Lawrence Virtual School and the time and energy that this administration is willing to spend to dive in and understand what virtual education truly is. It appears that, oh, sorry, let's see. The district could stop cutting staff, closing buildings, stop rearranging boundaries if the leadership took a moment to understand what students around the state need. The open enrollment of the state for our school means that there are no true boundaries other than the corners of the state. If you stop trying to look when you look to see what could we do? I hear, have you looked at Andover Element, at Andover? Have you, do you know anything about Baser-Linwood online? Stop looking at other programs and listen to the veteran educators that have been at LVS some as long as 19 years. And we, we have ideas, we have gone to the board, we have gone to administration, and we have talked to ELT. And nobody wants to listen when we can be a part of the solution. Your district students are choosing us when they see numbers at 30 kids in a classroom. And so those 30, there are students there that end up coming to us. And now that we have a brick and mortar curriculum for our language arts and a district curriculum for our math, we're using district science in our elementary, it is an appropriate and meaningful option if you would just take the time to listen and let us lead you. Leadership is not a title. It's, it's an activity. And there are a thousand people in this district who want to be leaders that don't have that title. If you just open your ears, eyes, and listen, don't just hear us.
Our next public comment is Michelle Salmons.
Do you want me to start talking?
Okay.
Hi, good evening. My name's Michelle Salmons. I'm the art teacher at Sunset Hill. After looking at the BAC's revised concept, I was curious to see what the class ratios using their data from page seven looks like a little differently, and that's what we're passing around right now. I created these graphics to better illustrate student ratios according to the projections. On the outer circles, I have listed each grade band. Each grade shows how many sections will be needed to keep student ratios to 25 for K3 and 30 for 4 or 5, followed by the population count. The inner circles, top half, shows total number of students. Each grade band has divided by the total number of each section for each grade band. Then you get your 20, your, your 25 and your 30. The bottom of the inner circles show rounded section numbers and student ratios. Since we are dealing with humans, we're not dealing with decimals or fractions of people. Many schools have passed that given student ratio by one whole student or more. So Hillcrest 4 or 5 has 31, Langston Hughes 4 or 5 with 32, Prairie Park 4 or 5 with 33, Quail Run 4 or 5 with 35, Schwagler 4 or 5 with 31, Sunflower 4 or 5 with 31, and Sunset Hill 4 or 5 with 33. These student ratios can be corrected, but only by raising your K through third grade classes going over 25. I have a few more numbers to point out. If you look at the second table on page seven that we've been looking at, that I think is up on the screen right now, you will see allotted sections per grade, which are the 222 sections that we don't use, but ideally, we would love. We know we're using much less than that. Using those ratios in the same table, the total number of elementary sections or FTE comes out to 162.3, or 163 if we're talking about humans again. So on the last slide, I have adjusted the student ratio by adding FTE to each school, just to see what that might look like. It increases sections or FTE to 180, a difference of 17 teachers, which is a lot. But it's nice to see what those look like if we were actually dealing with lower class sizes. Please keep teacher effectiveness at the forefront of your mind. It is going by the wayside when we keep focusing on efficiency. The effect of the pandemic, followed by increased class sizes and transferring of 15% of our elementary students, will continue to put our students at a disadvantage and make our teachers' jobs harder. Please consider asking district administrators to lower the student ratios at our elementary schools. Teachers' working conditions are students' learning conditions. Thank you.
Okay. That's all the public comment that we have on this particular item. Is there any additional board discussion?
I had a mark here that I think I didn't fully, Kay asked a question about, I understood that the transfer for the students, I mean, the transportation for the students by McDonald Drive was related to an existing bus route. Kay asked a question about Schwagler students going over 23rd. Are we not able to do that because there isn't an existing bus route, or can we, can you speak to that? And if you answered it and I missed it, I apologize.
I don't have information off the top of my head on students, if there are kids over there that have qualified routes, but we will certainly take a look at that and, and we would do something similar there as well.
Thank you. So we could, you could report that back to the board in one fashion or another through Dr. Lewis's.
So you're talking about students that are, from where again?
So she's talking about students that are south of 23rd who are going to Schwagler.
Okay, south of 23rd. Okay. Yes, I can check on that.
And then I have another follow-up request for ELT. Building on what Erica said around class sizes and the conversation around contingency isn't necessarily relevant to the motion in front of us, but I would like to hear what those, what the cost is for reducing. I know that you've already been looking at the cost of reducing the ratio from 30 to, I think Kristen said 27 or 28. I would like to know what that number is and likewise, at the 25 for the lower grades as well. Thank you.
Yeah, we could certainly get those costs. And please know, we're not just saying we're going to keep these class sizes at 20. It costs money, you know?
Yeah, that's why I'm at, I just want to know the hard, the dollar amount so that we can, for planning and for the board's understanding, have an idea of what that goal is. And then when we're making other decisions, be able to factor that in. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
If there's no other comment, then.
This is Carol.
Carol.
I just have a follow-up question, perhaps, if we could look at slide number five. Can everybody hear me? I'm looking at slide number five, but I'm seeing where no student crossed McDonald to attend Deerfield walking. It says the concept is that city working on a plan with a design route of route in 2024 and construction in 2026 tentative. It's, I mean, that's, we're talking about, how much is, is that going to cost the city? And I'm also looking at the proposed upgrades between 19th Street to West 26th. And that's there, the city's talking about adding more sidewalks, which is going to cost the city 1.3 million. But can someone give me like a projected date when that's going to finish?
Dr. Engelbrecht, could you remind the board what the solution was regarding the request that we don't have students walking across McDonald Drive from.
Yes, I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
I'd be glad to. And first comment that the city is just in the very beginning stages of that proposal. They shared that with us at the Boundary Advisory Committee. They're looking at 2025, 2026 before they could have anything in place. Our recommendation that will come to you from staff, administration, is that we would provide transportation for those students north of Second Street to Deerfield so they would not have to cross McDonald.
And is there a contingency plan if someone misses the bus? Or is there, I'm just wondering.
No, we have not had, developed a contingency plan if they miss the bus.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. I think we're ready for a motion then, please.
I move the Board of Education accept the Boundary Advisory Committee recommendations for the 2023-2024 school year.
It's our second.
Yes. Emerson?
No.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Van?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Kadu Blackwood?
No.
Motion passes 5-2.
Thank you. Oh, sorry.
Shannon, I do have some comments.
Okay, yes, explanation about, thanks.
So I know it's, we just voted on boundaries and class size has been a part of that conversation. I would like the board to, there should be a consideration in my mind, an effort to get our class sizes lowered and smaller. We hear from teachers, we hear from parents that their class sizes are way too large. And so we need a commitment to, to get our class sizes smaller.
Thank you. Okay.
Shannon, I'll make a quick comment.
Yes, thank you, Kay.
So I just wanted to note that, you know, it's really important that, that we're able to move forward on our class size, well, just our planning process. But my note was specific to just my continued concerns in regards to the safety of our students getting to and from school. Thank you.
This is Carol. I just wanted to piggyback or explain that's, that's my number one concern. I've been very consistent about student safety since day one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our report tonight is on effective employees, Effective Employee Report Part Two Retention and Recruitment Update. I'd like to invite Kristen Reiner, our Executive Director of Human Resources, to the podium to get us started. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. We are going to present part two of our Effective Employee presentation. And tonight, I'll let the team introduce themselves.
Megan Epperson, Assistant Director of HR.
Caitlin Schulman, Recruitment and Retention Facilitator.
Ron May, Director of HR.
All right. So the first piece of the presentation is we're going to share just an update from the fall of our recruitment and retention initiatives and updates. And then we have J.C. Roberson and Jess Rohberg, who are going to be presenting information from the Calendar Committee on the Four Day Student Week as a recruitment, a potential recruitment and retention effort as well. So just high level, as we start out, we're going to focus on the items that we have done this year to recruit teachers from our letters of intent to attending our recruiting events. And then, I think I said in the fall, retention is the new recruitment. And we do have some numbers to share, some of our efforts that we've been focusing on this year from building leadership with our classroom teachers and classified staff.
So first, we'll talk a little bit about recruitment. And here's just some photos of some items that we've had this year. The top left shows a group photo from our student teacher tailgate party this fall. The top right corner is a, is a setup for how we kind of set up for our education fairs at different universities. And the bottom right is a picture, an action photo of our recruitment fair and interview day that we held back in February. And on that interview day, we had 22 administrators that participated in interviewing 28 candidates. We had other groups there, like the Lawrence Schools Foundation, Farm to School, Staff of Color, LEA, North Native American Student Services, Special Education Benefits and Wellness. And we did offer some letters of intent, 12 of them out at that day. We've also had recruitment fairs that we've attended at K-State, PSU, KU, Emporia, University of Missouri, Kansas City, and Wichita State. One of the other things that we've done, that we've kind of, we've kind of responded to, has been nice, is collaborating with our IT department, with our new, with our student teachers and getting student teachers' devices, getting them set up with emails and things, kind of making them a little more connected to the district and also an easier transition if we are able to retain those teachers, as teachers, I should say. And we've also developed a survey, and this is a picture of the QR code, where when we're at recruitment fairs and we're talking to, to new, new to the profession teachers, this is a way for us to get them to go and fill out a survey that gives us interest in their profession and some of their data on race, race and ethnicity and other feedback that we might like to gather. And that moves to retention.
All right. So the next piece of that is our retention work. So just to kind of begin that, top left corner is some teachers at New York. They did a teacher escape room as part of their professional development. Bottom left is the New Teacher Academy. They were winning some prizes at one of the first sessions. And then in the middle there, it's Marcy Lucian, who was the LHS Staff Member of the Month, I think, in September. And then the last picture is some of our wellness bingo winners, which was part of our wellness initiatives that we've been working on this year. So just little fun highlights there. Another big piece of our retention work is our stay surveys. So I've really been streamlining this. I call it Snacks with Schulman. And I go to different buildings every Wednesday. It's open to certified and classified staff. I bring treats and just see if they will complete a quick little five-minute survey with me. So the goal there really is to check in with our buildings, check in with our staff members, have an opportunity for them to share kind of things that are going on, see if there's any areas of high need that maybe we can address right away or other things that, more long-term, that we can be working on. It's also been helpful to seek trends that are happening maybe at a building level or, and compare that to some things maybe that they share that are more district-wide. And our survey was actually created off of Jimmy Casa's Cultureize one-on-one interviews. So these are the five or six questions that we ask when we are doing the interviews. The first one is always a nice way to start, so something that's bringing them joy. You know, I think sometimes we get bogged down with negatives. So what is something that really is driving your work is a great way to start. And number three has also always been interesting, removing one task from your current role. You know, we all have heavy plates and workload. So what is something that maybe we could address a little more quickly? And then the other great piece there at the end I've been finding is like brainstorming different ways that we can support our staff. So that was question five. You know, often we have ideas of how we can support them, but how do they feel like they needed to be supported by the district? So those are our questions there. And then this is kind of just some data pieces from those day surveys. So you guys can see that we do have quite a big range of all different levels being represented here as well as a wide spectrum of experience. So that's the first one. It was the different positions. And the second one was field. And the second one was field years of experience in the field of education. And I also have a little piece here of how many years in Lawrence. So as you can see, we do have pretty much all ranges represented. So I've been able to kind of talk to a good group of, of our staff. The next piece was to implement a site-based monthly recognition program for all employee groups. So this kind of has little, a few different pieces here. Big piece that has really improved is that site-based recognition program. I think a lot of the times, schools kind of had been doing them, but we've really been helping share those out on the Daily Post. Julie Boyle has been really great with that. And schools have been sharing them with me as well to get them on our HR social media sites. So that way, the recognition is a little bit more widespread. And then we also have our Bright Lights from HR Spotlight that happens at the end of every month that I'll speak to here in a second. And that also goes into our district-wide and foundation awards. We've worked with Julie to kind of utilize just one platform to collect those nominations. That way, we weren't like asking all in different rounds. And that's been really helpful for getting those, getting those recognitions out there. So this was something I started right when I first, I think it was barely an idea the first time I presented to you all. So now we are almost two years in. This is our Bright Lights of LPS. And I have a little sample of kind of what it looks like if you haven't seen it before. Hopefully it works. Maybe? No? Oh, well, that'll be a real bummer if it doesn't. Okay, well, that means you need to check out our social media if you have not. At USD497HR. Yeah. Woo, yay!
We did have other issues.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Well, darn. But again, just wanted to review that. So this has kind of been in place for two years. We highlight a different group of staff members. Mondays, we try to focus on our support staff. Tuesdays, our classroom teachers. Wednesday is like food service, custodians, admin, assistants. Thursday, we try to focus on the mental health team members or special ed, to librarians. And then Friday, we highlight any new staff members in the district. So hopefully, you follow our social media and can see those highlights in action. And then finally, another exciting thing to highlight, I think we barely had this as an idea as well, but we are fully, fully doing our Fridays. So this was an initiative we started to really try to make some connections with our district office and build that relationship between district leadership and staff. So it has been a goal to surprise a different building every Friday with a little treat of some sort and a note of appreciation to kind of start their days. And we've been tying it to the, to our wellness initiatives for occupational and emotional wellness. So really checking in on our employees and, and sharing our gratitude. And we have been doing that in person to really make sure they know, you know, we want to take the time to appreciate them. And we really have to say a huge thank you to all of our lead partners who've supported these initiatives. So we've got quite a few on this list and truly would not be possible without their support. We also have even had some of the business owners join us in those Fridays. And that's been really fun for them to get to, you know, be a piece of that and show that the community is also partnering with us to thank our staff members for their efforts.
Okay, lastly, we have a quick staff wellness update as it also pertains to recruitment and retention. So we're really excited that we've had the Early Childhood Benefit Program that classified staff have been able to participate in out at Kennedy. We've also had additional wellness posts that have been going up, either through the Daily Post or just, you know, accessible on calendars and things to help support all areas of wellness that we're really excited to keep rolling out. So in keeping in mind with those wellness goals, something that was rolled out this year based on some benefit committee feedback, were to include some specific helpful tips from our health insurance. So if staff's already participating in EAP, they signed up for Delta Dental, we wanted to make sure that we are connecting them with programs that are already in place and don't cost those employees anything. So those have been featured a lot in our Wellness Wednesdays. So if you've received that as a staff member, we really encourage everybody to look through those because there's a lot of great tips, even around the holidays, how to use EAP if you're feeling stressed in that moment, how to access, you know, Blue Access as part of our Blue Cross Blue Shield app. So lots of great things that our staff members, we want to be able to have access to because that's part of their benefits that they've signed up for through the district. Some of our next steps for staff wellness, including growing that wellness team and expanding kind of what we view as wellness, so looking at wellness as more than just your social, emotional wellness, but also looking at spiritual, physical, intellectual, environmental, financial wellness, all sorts of dimensions there. And we're excited to see what kind of overlaps that might have with the new SEL curriculum that was adopted as well. Something I'm really excited for too, as we look at potential budgetary impacts, we know that our healthcare premiums went up this past year. So we're really excited to start digging into what was causing some of those high trends and what are some ways we could be addressing those to not only support employees, but then also hopefully have a positive impact on our premiums too.
All right. To wrap up the first part of this for recruitment and retention, I think two of our biggest efforts this year too have been our S R retention payments of increasing or doubling that amount to $3,000. So the last payment will go out in June for those, everyone that completes the last day of work on 5/25. And then also the negotiations efforts for both classified and certified staff and increasing wages. This is, I think, a huge retention and recruitment effort as well. And when we think about our EPIC survey, those are two items that are indicated in low satisfaction. The other piece that I wanted to share, our substitute fill rate has been better this semester than last semester. We've increased almost 6%. And so our subs also give feedback about culture and climate in a building. And so that's been good to see. I was just pulling up my computer because I wanted to make sure I, last Friday, we only had six unfilled absences. And that's a huge improvement from last year. And we, I think, have four Fridays left. So, you know, we appreciate everybody's efforts and that, that's, those are great numbers. We can handle six unfilled absences in a day. Also, our retirements, just to note, in 2021, we had 66 retirements, 22, we had 33, and this year, we have 31 retirements to date. And then Megan has our exit numbers. They have also decreased as well from last year to this year.
So in looking at the exit data from the Personnel Report for this board meeting this year and then also the same one last year, in 2022, we had 102 exits as of that 4/25 date. This year, we only have 71 exits, so a decrease of around 30.
So our next steps, I mean, we are in the middle of staffing and going through our reductions. And again, everybody has a position when we do, when we are going through our reductions. So just working with staff one-on-one and making those fits, the best fit for the teacher and the school. Our next steps also include analyzing our classified EPIC results. So that survey did close, so that will be our homework for the summer. And then we're going to be continuing our steps from the EPIC certified information. And that's going to be continued, our action plan as a district and how we're supporting staff, mental and emotional needs, and also continuing our work in staff wellness. And I think, any questions on that part before we move to the, I transition to the Four-Day Student Week?
No questions, but thank you so much for your work, you and your team. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank the teachers that are, and staff that are coming every day. That's, that's what we need, yes. Thank you.
I appreciate all of the information. You all are doing a lot behind the scenes and it's good to know what that looks like and make that more visible. So thank you for sharing.
Yeah, thank you.
I also want to acknowledge the reductions in staff leaving and the retention work that you've been doing, maybe contributing to that. And so I really appreciate seeing that number and hopefully, we can see that trend continue next year. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to transition to the Four-Day Student Week. And J.C. and Jess are ready.
Good evening. J.C. Roberson, Principal at Woodlawn and Chair of the Calendar Committee.
And I'm Jessica Rohrberg. I am co-chair of the Calendar Committee and I'm a physical therapist district-wide. I work age three through high school. So you've seen this chart before. When we voted for the typical calendar for next year, this is just a representation of our Calendar Committee. And as you can see, we have representation early childhood through district administration. And this is also a breakdown of our certified staff, our administrative staff, and PAL, CWA members. You can just kind of see where our voice comes from. I wanted to give, before I get into the timeline, just a thank you to our 25 members. The Calendar Committee, we really just focus on dates. But since COVID and some of the struggles that we've had as a district and as a state, possibly for COVID, maybe it was exacerbated, we kind of decided to look at what are some more innovative ways to possibly help staff and students. And so we've done a little bit more work these past years than we're used to as far as just changing numbers. So this, this presentation is just kind of a representation of some innovative thinking and some pros and cons of that innovative thinking. So this is just a timeline. Starting in 2021, we did start kind of brainstorming some different ideas, again, coming off of COVID and some staffing and, and student challenges that we had seen as a result. In Fall '22, we considered our typical calendar. And we also decided to build a four-day student calendar as well as a year-long calendar. After we reviewed all three of those, the committee decided that we were most comfortable and kind of wanted to pursue some more information around the four-day calendar. And again, we had that typical calendar built that you guys have seen this year as well. In December of 2022, we presented to the ELT, the four-day idea, and then to districts like Council in January. And then if you'll remember, in February, we did present that typical calendar and we approved that for this next year. Just a little review of the five-day work week that we have now. It was changed actually from a six-day work week as a result of Henry Ford. He was the big driver in that. And they decided that pulling the six-day work week to five, but keeping compensation the same would be a good, a good factory model. They were also hoping that people would have more time for leisure activities, shopping, and hopefully that shopping would include vehicles. So it was kind of the factory model that drove us from a six to five day. So when we look at some of the current challenges, we've talked a little bit about recruitment and retention, and we know that we had an increase in exits last year. You can, we pulled data from early spring semester and we had about 145 openings and we just kind of listed how those were listed on our website, our district website. We have a challenge with equitable plan time, early childhood through high school, and also within our schools, the general education to the special education staff. There's kind of a difference in some of that protected plan time. Teaming and data response. And then we also know that we have financial issues, not just here at home within our district, but also within our state.
So the first thing the Calendar Committee did is gathered as much research as we could based on current four-day calendars throughout the country. There's not much out there. There's more as these years post-COVID is coming back. There's more and more research that are coming. Green Bush also put together a Google folder with a bunch of information that we leaned on to. These are all just linked here. These are some of the, the research articles that we used. And you can, anyone can click on those and, and kind of dig deeper. We're going to share just a few that we really leaned on. The first one was an article, was an article by Morton. And basically, what he said was the effects, there were, there were effects of a four-day school week. Now, in his article, he did talk about the difference between rural and urban districts. And those two things really make a difference when we talk about four-day weeks. They use, they go to the four-day week for different reasons. In his research, he found that there was a significant decrease of bullying and fighting incidences, 39% and 31% respectively, and no detectable effect in, in the following areas that you can read there. I, a mentor told me one time that the best behavior management plan is engaging, engaging instruction. And engaging instruction occurs with data-driven planning and preparation. So when I saw this article and I saw that decrease of bullying and fighting, knowing that teachers had more time to plan and prep and produce engaging instruction, that didn't, that wasn't surprising to me. We also saw this firsthand at Woodlawn during the hybrid era of COVID. We actually, because our class sizes were reduced and teachers had a day to plan, we had zero major behavior entries at Woodlawn during that period. Teachers were able to step in, they had properly prepared, they knew their students, and they were able to interject prior to some of those bigger incidences. In the Thompson article, the effects of the four-day school week, this was a, really a hinge point for us as the Calendar Committee. Talking about maintaining that instructional time is critical. The number of instructional minutes is what's important to student learning, not necessarily the days with which they are there. So in this article, they took their sample size, their samples, and arranged them into low, middle, and high. And what they found was that the instructional time, as I said, made the difference for student achievement. They found no significant differences in academic achievement between districts that use the five-day schedule and those that use the four-day schedule, as long as the districts with the four-day or shorter week schedule maintained a high or medium amount of instructional time for students. And so the low, middle, and high on this slide says if there is a low instructional time in the four-day week, there are negative impacts for this group, but, I'm sorry, in math and ELA. If there's a middle or a medium instructional time, there are some transition, negative impacts in math during the year of the adoption. However, that effect reverses in the following year. And there was no statistical impacts in ELA achievement. And then obviously, as the more instructional time you get in the four-day week, no statistically significant impacts on ELA achievement. What we really wanted in this article was for them to give us that number. What is the pinch point of instructional time? They don't. But the average school day in, within the, the group of schools lasted seven hours and 45 minutes under a four-day school week model and six hours and 54 minutes under a five-day model. So that you can see that that four-day model increases instructional time. In this article, it talks about the four-day school week benefits and all of the items that our HR team has been talking about to attract and retain teachers, improve morale and academic quality of teaching, higher attendance rates among students, more time for teachers to plan and collaborate, a better work-life balance for teachers and students, an extra day for students to seek opportunities such as job shadowing, dual credit programs, volunteering. And I want to add in there, rest. Some of our kids are working. Some of our kids are working really hard after school. And more time for staff professional development. Turner goes on to say, he did, they did mention some barriers. We also wanted to include some feedback that we received from the community regarding the four-day calendar, some concerns. We got emails asking some clarifying questions and we wanted to put that in here too. These were also concerns of our, the Calendar Committee in this large shift in the change in schedule. So, the biggest one was some families will struggle to find childcare. Obviously, the most impacted are elementary-age children. And students receiving services in a specialized setting. And I think Jess wanted to talk about this.
Yeah, I wanted to comment on that because these are a lot of the students that I work with. So, when we think about students within our district, if we're really looking at that equity piece, if there are students that within our own school buildings that were saying, wow, their needs are so specialized and so intense that we really need to pull them into the specialized setting. I don't know if we can meet their needs in the general education setting. Then, it's really challenging when you think about being able to find a daycare that can support that as well. So, when, if we do continue these conversations and we really do look at that equity piece, I do think there are some populations within our school district that we really need to pay some extra attention to and be mindful that there may need to be something a little bit different that we might provide those families and those students just for the safety that they may not be able to get somewhere else.
Some other barriers would be reduced access to school lunches. But we know through COVID, there is an opportunity there to support our community. More time over the weekend for students to forget what they learned. I would reiterate, going back to what I said about engaging instruction. If the instruction is well-planned and well-prepared and students are engaged, that extra day, in my opinion, is irrelevant if the information is engaging. And that's the same concern that we would have over long breaks in summer months too. And an increased risk to children's safety on the weekday without a school, or without school. Turner did go on to say that overall, once parents heard the four-day calendar option, the four-day week and these other considerations that have taken into account, that he said, "Parents tend to support the four-day week, but there needs to be an intentional special attention to those families with unique challenges," which the Calendar Committee would absolutely agree with.
So, we just wanted to provide a visual. This is the 23-24 calendar that we approved for next year. This is our typical calendar. We wanted to put it next to what would be a possible 24-25, four-day calendar. Please know that this has not been gone through with the master agreement. We just really wanted to give you a visual to show you what those off-days look like. So, when we built this calendar, we did put Mondays in. The reason that we did that, just in this draft, was most of the holidays are going to fall on that day. So, it was nice that we don't have an extra day. Like, for example, if we had Fridays off, you know, three days or three weeks of the month, we wouldn't have two extra days. And also, thinking that a lot of families and parents may have even more holidays off on Mondays than we do to provide that care and support on those days. One thing about this calendar is it is universal, early childhood through 12. So, everyone's off together. That was something that I've heard in the middle school is that some days if elementary's off and middle school's not, they may have to pull the middle school kiddo out to help with younger siblings, just for safety at home. Everything would shift to Mondays. So, your parent-teacher conferences, your reporting and recording, if you notice, other than your Thanksgiving, Christmas, and spring break, there are no more of those Thursday-Fridays off that we've been used to with some of that parent-teacher conference and prep time. I did just go through some of this, kind of why we chose those Mondays. What the hope would be is that we would shift a lot of the things that take time on other days onto those Mondays. So, your plan, your PLCs, your IEP team meetings, your GEI meetings, all those AVID meetings or AVID meetings, excuse me. This calendar would also get rid of that early release day that we have on Wednesdays now. So, there would not be an early release day during the week anymore. And again, we kind of talked about this on Why Mondays. I put an asterisk next to the ones that, this is for the 24-25 year, which is why New Year's is in there. Next year, it does fall on a Monday. Asterisks are the holidays that are protected by the master calendar as non-contract days. Something that we had to think about why we also chose Mondays. We do have a period of time that we wanted the staff days to fall. So, we can't push before August 1st because of staff benefits for our new employees. So, our staff benefits start August 1st. So, that's a kind of a hard start for our new teacher orientation. This is not written in a master agreement, but historically, we just have tried not to return after Memorial Day. So, when we're shifting some of our days and some of our hours and minutes, we're really trying to work within that timeframe, which was why we did naturally gravitate toward Mondays in our first draft.
Okay, the chart is back. Remember with calendar, this is like a 10,000-piece puzzle and the puzzle pieces are very, very small. So, the calendar comparison here has the typical calendar in blue and white, the four-day student calendar in yellow, and the negotiated contract on the right. What this shows is that if we look at that first row, student contact days, the top number shows the current student contact days that the state calculator calculates in the, with the calendar that you already approved. For example, at elementary school, which is ES, there are 168 student contact days. In the four-day calendar that is, we just showed, proposed, there would be 149 student contact days. Where this gets a little fuzzy, and we'll share in the upcoming slides, is that the time on Mondays in the four-day calendar is counted towards the minutes. So, when you look at the days, look at the minutes, there's a discrepancy because of the way the state calculates the minutes, which we'll show you in just a minute. But we did want to show that the difference of the student contact days. In the number right below the 168 in the elementary student contact days, there is a number in parentheses. And that number shows what the time is, or the days and seats that students would be there if we took out the 90, or the Wednesday early release. So, in the typical calendar, right as it stands, students are in school 168 days. If we take out the 90 minutes at elementary on those Wednesday early release, it comes to about 158-ish student days. This is complicated because on that 90-minute period, we can count those, some of those minutes towards student time. Questions about that? Maybe the next few slides will help answer that. It's super complicated. The state counted Wednesdays as one full day. I know at the elementary level, we think about it. If we reduce the 90 minutes, reduce specials, reduce lunch, it's like a little over a half-day or, you know, two-thirds of a day, that kind of thing. We'll just keep going. We can come back to this if we need to. So, this is what I was talking about. So, how are student minutes counted on workdays per KSDE? As you all know, we use the student minute calculation as opposed to the day, the student seat contact time calculation. So, student minutes are counted by what is happening. So, if there's a planned day or a workday, 0% of that time, instructional time is counted. So, those planned days that are, that currently sit in the, in the traditional calendar, we get zero time calculated for that. If it is a student instruct, if it's a staff development or in-service day, we can count 50% of that day towards student minutes. Because we're working, and it says there, "The training must be time reserved for staff development or in-service for the purpose of improving staff skills, developing competency, on and on and on." When students are actually in seats, obviously, that's 100% of that time counted. We can also count 100% of time for parent-teacher conferences. That is why you'll see the discrepancy between the time in seats versus the minutes because we use, the calculator calculates these 50%, 100%, depending on what we allocate those days for. Okay. I did my best explaining that.
So, this is a little, a little bit different chart. We had heard some feedback as to why didn't we use Fridays and also what are Mondays for? So, this really kind of helps to show the power of the minutes. So, at the very top, you'll see, these are the hours that are mandated by KSDE. So, for kindergarten through 11th grade, in a school year, we have to have 1,116 hours. Seniors are a little bit less at 1,086. That top column there, or top row, excuse me, is your elementary school, middle, high, and senior minutes for the calendar that was approved for next year, that typical calendar. I also put the start times underneath. So, you'll see when each level starts school and ends school. Depending on how we code a Monday, so, in the next, in the bottom, the four-day sections, that first row is just your four-day. If we coded a Monday all in-service, this would not protect any planned time for teachers, which is one thing that we're really hoping to be able to do if this is discussed, specifically for some of those teachers who have a little less protected plan time, thinking of, you know, our special education staff. If we just coded an in-service day, didn't provide that time, that shows you what the minute comparison would be between the four-day and the five above. If we changed the coding a little bit, we gave two hours plan, which again, we would get zero minutes for, for student contact. And then, the other six were in-service and that could be your IEP, GEI, any of your professional learning communities. You can see how that changes. So, I wanted to see how many minutes would we need to bump our school days to keep that academic time consistent according to Thompson's research article, how important that was. So, I just kind of played with start and stop times. So, in elementary, for example, if we had an eight-hour in-service Monday, we would have, if we increased the school day about five minutes, so we started at eight, ended at 3:10, that would get us three more hours than five-day. If we bumped to that other alternative, the six-hour in-service, two-hour plan, we'd have to bump it about 15 minutes, okay? And then, you can go on and on. So, in middle school, we wouldn't necessarily have to adjust it on the eight-hour in-service, but if we protected those two hours, we would. To me, this is really powerful just to look at the power of the minutes. Knowing that we are kind of boxed in a little bit between that August 1 and that Memorial Day, where would we have room and flexibility to change those academic minutes? And we're not flirting with the Kansas State hours we're above, but just being respectful of some of those research articles that we read, how could we keep that time consistent? And I feel like this is really powerful, if you're limited on the days, just how much power a couple minutes would have. I do, actually, I was told to comment. Sorry, I can't let people down. We do have a program currently running on a four-day schedule and that's early childhood. So, they have Wednesdays. That would shift if we, if we continue these conversations, that would shift to a similar day. They would have to be protected a little bit differently, though. They currently have four hours and 20 minutes protected in the master agreement because they do not run specials or library, which is where your elementary plan would occur, or a period off, which is where middle and high. So, they would have to be a little bit different where it would be more of a four-hour. Early childhood does not have mandated minutes with the state, so we don't have to watch that as much. So, we do have more flexibility there, but they would be a little bit different than this typical model on a Monday might be.
I do want to clarify, that four-hour plan would happen during those Mondays, though.
Yes.
It would not affect the rest of the week.
So, when we've kind of talked and we've heard from previous effective staff comments as well, this could be a really nice recruitment and retention. Independence did change to a four-day calendar. They came with the whole plan when they presented to their community and since that was released, they've had about a 450% increase in applications. Increasing that equitable plan time, which we talked about. Allowing that really intentional time on Mondays for teaming and data response.
And I will say that, that PLC model, the professional learning community, of all the research, we know that DeFor's work in this area is one that remains consistent. It is the most effective way to move data within all groups and especially, especially in marginalized groups. We also know that Hattie's work on collective teacher efficacy, which just means when teachers are all on the same page, doing the right thing, that has a 1.6 effect size. And in Hattie's research, which he was based on 1,000 research reviews composing of 50,000 studies and over 250 million students, that he found that .4 is a marker that represented a year's growth per years of schooling. So, anything above a .4 is accelerating the speed with which kids can grow. Collective teacher efficacy is 1.6. It is the highest. So, in order to move kids, that PLC process is repeated success in research. That is where this four-day student calendar, five-day staff calendar, really centers on students and student learning. While they are not in class, going back to what I said earlier about effective instruction, the best way for us to engage kids is for teachers to have the time to plan and prepare for the littles in their seats. And through Hattie and DeFor, that research is consistent.
The other possible solution is financial savings. I got some information last week. So, that $700,000 that we heard from Future Planning Committee, I confirmed last week, that was in transportation. So, a lot of the research shows that the financial impact of this, of a switch to a four-day is not significant. However, for our district, one thing that could also be tied back into that was that second plan time for middle school. If we looked at something like this, would that still be necessary to have that second plan every day if we could shift some to a Monday? And according to Future Planning, that was about a 1.3 million savings. So, that's something that within our district is a little bit unique compared to some of the research that we read. We would also hope that some of this, that this shift to Monday work could decrease some of that miscellaneous cost that we get for after-hours, after-work meetings and work that teachers are putting in this year, that we could decrease some of that extra funding.
And if we circle back to what HR just talked about with the staff morale, reducing those after-school, that after-school time and work, if we could include those into Mondays, that's a direct benefit as well. Again, some considerations that the Calendar Committee started with from the get-go. Providing those meals and care to students in need on Mondays. Clarifying the Monday staff schedule. This is really key because whatever, however we allocate those Mondays will determine the minutes that we talked about, which will determine how long we would need to extend the school day, if we would need to. So, it's, this is like a cart before the horse thing. Do we make a decision on a four-day calendar and then make a decision on the instructional time and then make a decision on Mondays? Or do we make a decision on Mondays and then make a decision, you get what I'm saying? So, the other technical piece, well, I want to, another large component of this is classified staff work schedule. Our classified staff is represented on the Calendar Committee. And this was a large concern for us. We want to make sure that they have the amount of hours and the benefits that they still receive today. We came up with quite a few solutions for this. It's, all of these considerations are a bit beyond the scope of the Calendar Committee, but we did want to be intentional in thinking through some of these things. Again, this is a lot, a lot of moving parts moving forward. So, we, you know, wanted to put this presentation together to see kind of where we're at before we start moving forward with some of these other things. And then, the technical pieces. Do we build snow days into a school calendar? Typically, we do. If we build one in and use it, we get one for free sort of thing. However, in this calendar, we have all these Mondays. So, could we potentially, if we used a snow day, just use one of those Mondays in May to make up for that day? And then, going back to the table and looking at, looking at lengthening or realignment of the schools, the student school day. And like Dr. Rohrberg said, And like Dr. Rohberg said, those small-minute adjustments make a big difference. So if you look at, we could even consider looking at some of those holidays and what that looks like if we're extending the calendar, I mean, I'm sorry, the school day.
And this was just one thing that was actually mentioned to us in our Calendar Committee, and we wanted to post it. It was something that you mentioned, Mrs. Campbell, Ms. Kimball, about the new graduation requirements. So for our current seventh graders, they're going to be looking, they want them to complete two or more post-secondary assets in either category, one's academics, the other's career, career and rural world experience. We had read in the Turner study, the one out of Missouri State, that that extra day really gave some time for some volunteering, community service, workplace learning experience based around their interest field of study. So that was kind of a nice tie-in, that this could be a possible day to get some of that career and rural world credit toward graduation.
Good job on the real world.
Real world.
Yeah, that's hard. Now while, again, the, a lot of this is beyond the scope of Calendar Committee, there are pretty significant next steps that we would have to solidify. First, being that Monday support for especially our early elementary students and those students in specialized classrooms. And really engaging our community partners to help wrap around support and around our students and families. We've already been in conversation with Boys and Girls Club, looking at the Lawrence Public Library, working with Theodore Lawrence, University of Kansas, the Art Center, and Lawrence Parks and Recs to see what sort of offerings they could have on Mondays. A consistent Monday, it could be every Monday that they offer day programs, or something like that. Access to meals on students' day off. And then what would it look like for the possibility of scholarships for and transportation to some of that programming? To minimize barriers. I know Dr. Lewis really was intentional about asking the Calendar Committee for next steps with feedback, surveying students, staff, and families to see where their concerns are, what, what we're missing in this, and where families are at, so we can really pinpoint our support. And then again, the technical pieces, all, all of those things, it's like a domino effect. So we'd have to make some decisions to ensure that we're meeting the state requirements. One big technical piece in this four-day calendar, student calendar, is that the master agreement does not marry a four-day calendar well. So we'd have to consider renegotiating that master agreement for needed changes with this new calendar. While being a huge undertaking, it could be an opportunity for us to really look at the needs of our, our staff and the board, and, and kind of start at a clean slate in thinking through, what do we need in a master agreement? We've been trying to sort of fix big, big problems with these solutions in the master agreement with additional planned time and that sort of thing. So this could be an opportunity to sort of rethink that as well. Okay. Questions?
Okay, so I have a couple concerns. So the first thing that I noticed when I was clicking through some of the research is that most of these articles are coming from places where the learning model was implemented in like rural districts. So I'm a bit concerned as how that's going to transfer over into our district, especially when it comes to extracurriculars. So that's something that our district really excels at, is having these opportunities for students, and specifically extracurriculars like sports that require practices every day after school. So I know that those could probably still take place on Mondays, but then it becomes an equity issue of if students are able to get transportation to those events. Is there any sort of plan in place to get transportation not only to those like extra places to support students, such as like Boys and Girls Club, but then also extracurricular activities?
Great question, thank you. As I stated earlier, a lot of that research, rural communities, rural districts, were ones that initially started this, the four-day process. And it was primarily due to reducing transportation costs. Imagine a large area that they need to bus students in, and so that was a huge piece for them. It was also actually referenced with extracurricular, reducing that Monday day, so they are also not traveling for extracurriculars on that day. While your question is, was a, is a concern for ours. Also considering, why not Fridays, thinking about all of the time that students are gone for some of those extracurriculars on Friday. That is a little bit beyond what Calendar Committee can and should think about, or make decisions for, let me say that. We definitely thought about it, but some of those, some of those answers will fall into place or will, will need to be considered once or if this calendar would be approved.
And then as far as academics go, with concerns to losing that extra day for instructional period, I would say that it would be at least some impact on students. I can say that for me personally, I've taken eight AP courses currently, and lecture time is extremely significant in making sure that we are prepared for our courses. So I know that you said there would be like some increase in instructional minutes. Would there be any way to make sure that our curriculum, like, I just guess I want there to be time to make sure that our curriculum can be adjusted so that our students can still have success in those courses that require more lecture time and that they're not being given like a disservice by this decision.
Skipper a round of applause for these questions, thank you, that was a beautiful question. As a building principal, I want to, I would not be up here if I did not believe that this calendar was good for kids and learning. That is the center and the barometer of every decision I make at Woodlawn. Kids first, always, students first, always. We already have to adjust our instruction and our curriculum for those early release Wednesdays. When we have a 90-minute ELA block on Wednesdays, we can't do that because of all the other, it's a shortened day, and then we have specials and, you know, all of that stuff. So teachers are doing those things. That instructional time will be critical in the next few decisions for this calendar. We would have to look at, what are some of those AP courses? And how much time would you need in this four day? And is that something that we can be creative with in those four days? The research, which is really all we have, does show that those minutes, as long as they are in that medium or high category of instructional time, does show us that the learning loss is not significant. But I, I've not been in a four-day week either. So I think it's a great question and something we definitely should be intentional about.
JC, did, did, do you happen to have anybody on the Calendar Committee who's at Free State? Did, did they happen to give any, at least? Because I get that there's, that there's decisions or, or things that you don't know, but did they happen to give any feedback on how this would affect redesign?
I, I'm sure we have someone from Free State, because we have people from both high schools. They, I've not heard any discussion about redesign.
Okay.
That is something I can follow up with.
Okay.
Is there anything in particular that you?
No, I'm just, just, because I know that as they've done that work, this was not something that they had considered. So I'm just curious if, if, if you had had somebody, if they had, if they had brought it up, but.
The only feedback that we had from Free State was last week, and it was a question about Fridays, because I think there was a track meet, and they said, "We're going to have 10 staff out and about 110 students." So it was a, our, our only questions so far from the high school have been related to sports on Fridays.
Okay.
But that's something we can definitely ask about.
Okay.
I do want to caveat too, that Mondays, we did that because of the natural federal holidays. We're not sold on Mondays. I don't know the percentage of students that are affected by athletics or activities on Fridays. That seems like a lot, but again, so, you know, that, that calendar is flexible.
Yep. Yeah, yeah, I'm, I was not expecting you to, to, to have all the answers. I was just curious if somebody had, had offered their, their opinion.
For context for you, so the redesigned schedule at Free State, those kids only have each class four days a week. So they already have one day a week where they're not having, in, in the class you don't have each day, kind of, it rolls through the week. And then, since I have student participating, they, they have missed a lot of Thursdays and Fridays in the spring. I don't, I can't speak for fall sports, but I, I think that is something to
Sure.
to ask more questions about with the high school.
Definitely.
Lines.
This is Kate. First of all, first of all, I, I'm always really thankful when I get to see UTLP here presenting. It's, it, it's just, I feel comforted in knowing I can trust this information. I'm not saying I can't trust any of your information, I, I, I just appreciate it. And thank you for being here tonight after a long day of work. So when I first heard about this concept, I feel like it was in the fall. At that time, I was thinking that it, when it comes to our budgetary situation, that it was going to be a this or that. And as, as we've been learning, as we're kind of going through this process, it's not a, it's not, as we hear Shannon say, it's not a this or that, it's a this and that. And so for, for me, you know, there's a lot of, I hear a lot of benefits when it comes to the just alignment across the different grades. Mondays, being able to utilize already federally holidays where a lot of parents are, and family members are, are, are not working. I think if we can figure out that programming for whatever day is selected, there could be some huge benefits here, you know, for, for the staff, which we are on number one. Keep the staff, as Chris was saying, retention is the new recruitment. So, so yeah, so I, I really appreciate this information. I've been waiting for this particular information, and I hope that we investigate this a, a lot more fully as we proceed. So, thank you.
Thank you. The retention piece is, as, again, as a principal, been something that our, the elementary principal group is a little, is concerned about. The number of applications, as you've heard from HR, has significantly decreased, even my time here in Lawrence. And when I would, I, I joke and say that I'm a polar, I like to ask people a lot of information. Information and data for me is important. And unanimously, staff felt like their two big concerns were time and for planning and prep. And when we talked about this, they unanimously said this would solve our stress and our, you know, our worry that we're not meeting, we're not doing the things we need to do for some of these kiddos. So that, what you just said, Kate, is, for me, is a critical piece, because I, I do believe that with intentionality of those considerations that we talked about, this would be a game changer for our kids, for behaviors, for academic improvement, for our teachers feeling like they are doing the things that they know how to do, and doing it well. And that's what, you know, that makes an organization thrive, really, so, in my opinion.
Becca?
And then you touched briefly on like some of the mental health benefits that would come from this, but I'd really like to like hear more about that, because I really feel like that seems like a strength from this plan. And I know that we're about to implement some curriculum that's going to really assist students with their mental health. But then I'm concerned that by switching to this four-day model, it would be kind of limiting their access to these resources. So could you kind of like give more information about how this is going to impact the mental health of both the teachers and the students, if you have data on that?
I don't have data on that. While, I, I guess I've considered a lot of the mental health aspect for students being able to, we know they have to work at the high school level a lot, or have time that extra day, if you are in athletics and activities, to do homework and do it well. And for teachers, that time to plan. What I had not think, thought of, and what you just, you know, showcased for me, so thank you, is that access to some of those mental health supports. So that is something that our committee will definitely add to the considerations, because I had not thought of that. So while I did not answer your question, thank you for that insight, yeah.
So I, I have some, yes, just some things I want to talk about or talk through. So I think this issue for me is particularly difficult, because I, everything you're saying about the impact that doing this would have on staff, I'm like, yay, like, we could solve a lot of, of really difficult problems for our staff if we do this. What really makes me struggle is that I am not as confident, as you expressed that you are, JC, about the research around the impact of this kind of schedule on student achievement. And there's a couple of new research studies that, as I was digging into all the resources that you shared, and there's some, and I've been watching the, the articles about this coming out since I knew that this was being worked on and talked about. So there was, there was a piece just at the beginning of this month, actually, and it was, granted, it was an opinion piece by some researchers from Rand Corporation, and, you know, talking about their, about their opinion about the research.
I'm familiar with the Rand article, I am, yes.
So, so this concerns me, because their opinion about the research is that most of the research is, the districts are comparing their current performance to their previous performance in a five-day schedule, and what they're not looking at is the cumulative impact of learning loss as compared to other districts that continue to be in a five-day schedule. And so, you know, what they said about it is, though the changes in the four-day versus five-day week were small as compared to their peers, they accumulated year over year, and that they're, they estimated that after eight years, the impact on student achievement would be equal to the negative impacts that have been caused by some estimates by the COVID pandemic. And, and looking, that's a pretty big, this is a pretty big negative impact. I, I think, I have concerns, because it seems like the state of the research on the academic impact is really in flux. So I'm not sure how to, how enthusiastic I can be about jumping in with, with both feet, given some of that. So I'm glad you're familiar with, with that article. There's, there's some additional research that was shared with, I think, several people on the board, if not everybody, about the impacts of four-day work week on the workforce. And I don't know if you've seen that, that research, but basically, there's another, a, a recent paper that talks about the, in districts with four-day work week, they estimate that it caused an 11% decrease in employment among working mothers. And, and so that then leads to the conversation about, if you're going to do something like this, what kind of supports are you providing for that fifth day? How robust they are? And I'll just be frank, I, we couldn't pull it together as a community to deal with that issue during COVID. And so I'm not really sure that I have a lot of confidence that we're going to have community partners that have the capacity to step up and provide free opportunities for kids on that day off. So that's, I have that concern. And then there's another real recent paper, because as you noted, most of the research in this area is around rural districts, because so many of the districts that have done it are rural. But there is another research paper, that's a white paper in progress, actually, about a suburban Denver district that did this. I don't know if you're from, if you saw this one.
I've heard about the suburban, I don't know that I've read that paper, but.
And I, I'm happy to send the links for all this to you, just so you can take a look at it and consider kind of how it fits into the work that you've done. They found in that particular, so, so, if you think of Denver, suburban northwest Denver, They found in that particular, so, if you think of Denver, suburban northwest Denver, so a district of about 22,000 students, they found a decrease in student test scores. So they've been doing it since 2018, this district. A decrease in student test scores, a 5%, a 5% decrease in student, in teacher retention for their experienced teachers, and a substantial decrease in home prices within the boundaries of their school district. And so that's not to say that that would happen here, but it raises a lot of questions.
And you said that was 2018, so they had COVID in the middle?
Well, the, the, the paper just came out.
Okay.
But it's a district in the Denver area that's been on a four-day schedule since 2018. And so I think, just to kind of summarize the, this, because this isn't really a question, this is more, I just want you to hear
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure.
I have concerns about the capacity of our community to provide meaningful opportunities for, and safe opportunities for students on Mondays for all families that need them. Or whatever day of the week, if it's Thursday or Friday or whatever day of the week. I do have concerns about the academic impact of doing this. And I appreciate the, the chart with the minutes. I think what I would be interested in seeing to help me understand better would be apples to apples. So not, I don't want to count in-service time. Like I actually want to see actual instructional minutes for our kids under a five-day versus a four-day calendar. Because I think, as you said, that's really what the research is showing is the
Power of the Minute.
Is the, yeah, is really driving it.
I was, we, with your feedback, I was going to do that, but there's, I, would you like to include things like lunch, recess, passing periods?
I think you have to because it's
For me, they're all instructional?
They're all instructional, and it's also what's already occurring.
Sure.
You know.
That's fair, we can do that.
But what I, I guess what I had questions about based on the, the chart that was in there is because you have so many Mondays, and if you're counting six hours of each Monday as instructional time for in-service, just because the state lets us, does that really equate to what we're currently doing in terms of instructional time? Yeah. And then, you know, the, I guess the workforce concerns and the impact on mothers in particular, let's just be real.
That was actually the
Would tie back to the concern about Mondays in general, or the day off in general.
Absolutely. The workforce was actually brought up in one of those first ELT meetings as kind of an initial survey that would be really interesting as a feeler. How has the workforce changed or has it since COVID? How many of us have already switched our hours? How many, so it'd be interesting, what, what is the need? Because we don't have a feel for that now, and I'd love to, that would be a really great initial survey.
And that goes back to
Really what's our need look like?
That goes back also to, I think, one of the things that a number of the articles about this really emphasizes is that the buy-in from your community
Critical.
Is like the thing number one that you have to have before you do this. And I, I know we're just starting the conversation. I don't think we're anywhere close
We're not.
To having
I will say, one thing that's been very, very challenging, the way that this all kind of rolled out this year was not what the calendar committee intended. This was meant to, to be a conversation around effective staff and retention. And this got grouped into the budget. And I cannot tell you how much damage I feel like that's done to the process and how much anger there's been around that. And that was not something that we did. So I feel like we're really digging out of a hole. Which is very frustrating because there was a lot of thought and intention that went into this. And I do feel like we've lost a great deal of that at this point, which is very challenging.
And let me say, I, I agree with you, it was very clear that there's been a lot of thought and intention to the work that you've done. And I also agree that you're right, that having it get pulled into the budget conversation meant that we were talking about this on a timeline and in a way that probably did not do a service to this conversation.
Right.
So, thank you for sharing that.
Let's respond really quickly to some of your, is that okay?
It's okay. I, I know I said an awful lot and I want to, I don't want to, I want to make sure other board members have a chance to say, but
It'll be very short. I, the long-term research has been a consistent concern. And COVID was in the middle of that. So looking at the research that's coming out in, you know, than this year, last year of districts that have done this, we have to look at the COVID impact of that as well. I'm not downplaying that research at all. I just, the other part that I wanted to talk about, the two parts. Those Mondays and what staff are doing on those days will directly impact the academic achievement gains or losses. So in that Denver district, I, what I could not find was what those teachers did on that fifth day. If they are intentionally planning, using the PLC process, using data-driven decisions, identifying those students, using the General Education Intervention Program, that is what moves groups. And having the time to do that in a way, in a manner that is impactful. If that fifth day is a non-workday, that will decrease over time. It, because we're in the same boat we're in now. With that, the, that six hours on Mondays, calculating that, while it seems, like students are not in seats on that time. That six hours that teachers are working and staff are working directly impact that, that time with, with students. So that's why the state does utilize that time at 50%. Because you, you can't really have one without the other. And right now, we're trying to do that on those Wednesdays or during planned time. And it's just not working. The last thing I, I just want to say is, there's a lot of pieces to this puzzle, a lot. But my concern is that if a four-day or a five-day week, if we don't have teachers to teach, it's irrelevant either way. And while that seems bleak, that is our current reality. Especially in some of those late openings that happen after August, when class sizes are high and we need another teacher, you can't, we can't get one. So thinking about our organization and hope, you know, rallying the community to surround us in this and being really intentional about those considerations. I think that in the end, our teachers will have the time to do the beautiful things that they do every day and feel really good about it. And that, to me, is why I know that giving them that time will provide a better experience for our kids.
You don't have to answer this right now because I want to give other board members an opportunity to ask questions or share input. But at the end of our conversation this evening, I would be curious to hear your reflections on where this should go next. So, you know, you talked about the calendar, there are some things that are way bigger than the calendar committee. Like how, how have you talked about handing off this work or what would that look like? So, but I want to get to other questions or comments.
I'll just So knowing what I know about both of you, I know you think about student safety. And knowing who's on the, a little bit about who's on the calendar committee, I know that's the case across the board. And so these comments are with that in mind. And I do find in every interaction I've ever had with you that you are incredibly student-centered and that Woodlawn runs that way. And I know from COVID and knowing a bit about your PT work that you care really deeply about special education teachers. I'm framing that because I'm about to say, and but. So I, I'm highly concerned about childcare. So for me, living through COVID and being president of the board during that time period, when you say we don't have evidence that suggests what the current workforce is, I would counter that we for sure have evidence that having to work and have your children at home is very challenging. So whether or not a parent is at home or whether or not a parent is in the workforce, I do think this has an impact on the family dynamics. And I believe as somebody that's done thousands of home visits, as you have, that if that family unit is not strong, no matter what you do in the classroom, it's not going to come through. The kid's not going to be able to show up in a way that's positive. So for me, for us to move forward, there has to be some kind of, you know, thinking about like sequencing of decision-making. There's nothing here in a four-day school, a four-day week that doesn't impact how we do business. So we saw trying to quickly change the calendar, for the schedule for the middle schools, for example, and the impact that's had on our staff. And all the contract pieces, as somebody that's been on negotiations for six years, this, this is a ginormous undertaking. Like it's not minor, it's every article. I can't, I'm trying, I'm like running through my head and, and I can't think of an article that this doesn't touch. But maybe, maybe I am missing something. No. So I mean, I just, the childcare piece, the normity of everything that this touches in the district, the special education piece, which was my primary caveat, because I know that's your passion and why you get up and, well, I don't know. I presume that because it's what you do. I, I can't, I don't, there's no way that I could ever vote for this if we didn't account for special education services five days a week. There's just not, I don't know how to reconcile that based on what I know about families who are managing care. And thinking about our entities that we, we cited that might be able to assist. Boys and Girls Club does their work in our buildings. So if your instructors have a fifth day of, of PD or, or if they're doing PLCs or whatever it is that they might be doing on that day, and hear me say I want them to have more planned time, I understand that's a component of retention. How does that, so there's so many pieces that just, it's almost like every turn that I heard that, oh, that would be amazing, I had this like, and but thought. So, you know, in terms of like, for a board's ability to approve this, thinking about a school district as large as Independence, I'm not sure how they went through all these steps or how much time they took to plan. But it does strike me that this is, we, we cannot make this decision without giving maybe several years of planning to really undertake this in a way that is thoughtful and really does do the, the retention impact that really does have the student impact that allows the community to respond. Because I don't, there, there's nothing like the experience of having, watched you all go through COVID and families having gone through COVID and its impact on public education that would make me ever think that I ever again want to vote for a day that students are not in school. So for me, like that, accounting for that is, is important. All the while saying that I know we have to do different things to get different outcomes. So, yeah, I, it's just, it's hard to wrap my head around how you do all those pieces. And account for everything.
Yeah. And, and to what you've said, I, that's really why it's, in our opinion, it's really an undertaking that takes a lot of people's focus. And this year, our focus has been other places, understandably so, excuse me. So I think that's why this is really stepped back. And, and, and that's completely understandable because I don't want you guys to think that we're presenting this thinking like, oh, this is a piece of cake. We know this is huge. And, and in order to do it well, it will take a long time and a lot of effort. And to kind of what you both have mentioned, it, it will be a community effort. And if we can't rally the community around, I, I don't know how far it will go either. So that's, I, I, I understand, and we understand, we feel it. It's, we know. It's, it's big and it will take all of Lawrence coming together.
We, we've asked a lot of Lawrence in the last three years too. So, and in the last couple of months even. So I think that piece is also weighing on me. Like another, this is a huge shift in how we do business.
It is. To sort of talk about both of your thoughts, we're sort of at a, a point where bringing these people, all of these partners, communities, the time and the commitment that it would take to consider some of these things, we, we're at a point where we need to know, is, is this something to move forward with? Or is this something that's sort of off the table? Not that, that needs to be anything right now. But I, we also don't want to do all this planning in this time if this is not something that, again, with the community surveys that Dr. Lewis is really interested in, if it's not something that the community can't wrap, wrap their arms around us with. With that said also, our staff need time. And I don't, and that time will be well-spent, you know, preparing for the, the kids in our seats. So it's like, this is one of those moral dilemmas where it's like a win-win or a lose-lose, depending on how you look at it. Because we have two competing, competing things happening.
So just this case, so just out of, out of clarification, is the question is like, to, the question that you have to the board, is this worth something that you want us to continue to investigate out? Is that what you're asking?
And I, well, I, I don't know that that's my place to ask. I do know that the calendar committee was presented with a traditional, a year-long, we were tasked to do in a four-day calendar. Here, the four-day calendar. I know that Kristin Ryan has already brought, throughout this process, a bunch of people to the table to sort of get a, get a feel, Boys and Girls Club, transportation, finance, that sort of thing. So thinking of next steps, we would need to identify the core team that would need to come together to pursue what the next steps are. I think the calendar committee has an idea of sort of what decisions we, we would need for the calendar piece. But again, this is bigger than the calendar committee. And they keep, we keep that separate for a reason. And so, I don't know, Dr. Lewis, do you know what?
In terms of next steps?
Yes.
You see, when I first heard of this idea of going to a potential four-day week, I was like, we can't do that, you know? And then I heard from the, you all in the calendar committee and how it was unanimous with the calendar committee as something that they wanted to, to look at. Then began to look at some of the studies and look at the, particularly some of the methodologies of the studies and how some of them don't apply to, to here. But then also thinking about the staff retention piece. But also, and I think I may have shared publicly during the futures planning committee process, that I would not bring a recommendation to this board that didn't encompass childcare for those Mondays. And I said, pay for our classified staff, you know, to remain consistent or more. And, and that's a challenge, you know, that, that childcare piece, you know, that's, that's a huge challenge. The good thing is, we're not asking you to approve this tonight. We're not asking you to approve this, you know, either, either next month. So I think what we're looking for tonight is direction on, because I definitely would be interested in what our families, our staff and our students are seeing about this. And so if we survey, if the board gives us, you know, the approval to move forward, just data collection around this, if we surveyed our parents and students and they said overwhelmingly, no, that's the, I don't think there's a need to continue to go forward with that. But still hearing the concerns from the board and giving time to address some of those concerns. Again, the biggest piece for me is that childcare piece. Because I think about my fourth grader right now, which would be a fifth grader. I don't know where, where he would go, you know? And when I first, just kind of got some initial feedback from my superintendent's advisory council, I was expecting, because it's parents and staff, I was expecting, absolutely not, Dr. Lewis, no, what are you talking about? But there were some conversations about, see how this was worked, but there was, there were still a lot of questions. But one comment that stood out to me was from a sped teacher that was quiet the entire time and toward the end said, this would be a game changer in terms of us as special education teachers having that time with our general education teachers that we're, we're limited towards now. So there's, obviously, we know there's many advantages to it, but also there are some, some barriers and some challenges that we will need to address. some barriers and some challenges that we will need to address. And so, again, we're just wanting to get some feedback from the board, is there something that, no, don't pursue it any further, or go forth and just seek and get additional data from the community.
This is Carol, it's, I don't want to just repeat what everybody said, but it's definitely, definitely worth, you know, getting community feedback, but I feel like, just me personally, I mean, the horse, this is because it's late, the horse has left the barn, and we see where Udora and Baldwin are looking at expanding their schools. So, you know, we, and we do want to, you know, retain our teachers, we, and we want to recruit teachers, but I don't, I definitely think that we do need more feedback from the community. Thank you.
Kelly, maybe you can answer this question, I'm waiting to hear back from the chancellor around this, but there's some indication that KU is looking at moving the bulk of their Monday, Wednesday, and Friday classes to Mondays and Wednesdays. Is that something you can share, or no?
I cannot speak on behalf of KU or the Provost, but I have heard that as well.
This, Kay, what I was looking, I'll, I'll just be really brief here, when I was looking at the materials, there was a survey that Greenbush had put in there, it was interesting some of the questions, how they posed some of the questions, like, for example, if, what is your biggest challenge for that, and they had listed a couple of things, and had families choose, and they said, if this was addressed, would this still be an issue for you? So, it, it was kind of, so, i-if we did with this, how we ask questions, I, I would say, you know, maybe look at that and try to get an idea of, but, yeah, so, I am with Carol with that, I'm also kind of with Kelly, thinking about the special, special ed students, and still five days thing, but, yeah, I mean, I think more information is, is good to go, and maybe can, we can address some of these questions that have been posed, so, that's where I'm at. Thank you.
And I would like to thank you for putting Indigenous Peoples' Day on the calendar as well. Thank you.
We do have one public comment on this item, so why don't we go ahead and hear from our public comment, and then we can have continued discussion from the board.
Community.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'm a mom.
Miss, yes, Misty Shiberly, thank you.
Misty Shiberly, I'm an educator, and I want to support my teachers, but I'm also a researcher, and there is a lot of research on the four-day school week, and some of it's very problematic. It'll be bad for education, bad for equity, bad for finances, and it may not even be good for retention. It is a short-term fix to replace pay increases, and its benefits will evaporate after a few years, when teachers have had a four-day school week but still have not gotten raises, and we find ourselves in the exact same recruitment crisis with added financial and educational shortfalls. The four-day school week works best in rural areas and when there is 75% to 85% community support. We are not rural, and the Futures Planning Committee only had support of just over 50%. The four-day week should not replace pay raises. There must be plans to raise teacher and staff salaries, and hire more teachers, so teachers do not feel overworked. A four-day week will not ease financial burdens. The savings that were projected in the fall are less than 1% of our budget, and any other savings may be, may be offset by new costs. Parents who can will leave the district, and we won't attract new families. Decreased enrollments is less income, and this will create a two-tier educational system of the rich and the rest. We will have to pay hourly staff more, and we should. These include the paras who make classrooms function and assist sped students. The good ones, though, will leave, if they don't have the hours. Same with bus drivers. Mine can't afford to work a four-day salary. First student has a contract, but it will have to pay drivers more, and they will renegotiate their contract with us at their first opportunity, just like the laptop contract this year, and pass the cost on to all of us. The four-day school week will also decrease the quality of education and increase inequity. The Heschinger report details significant losses to rural students in reading and math, but more importantly, it notes that these losses are greater in small-town and suburban districts like ours. Non-white students, students from poorer families, and girls also tend to suffer greater learning losses. Special ed students, as we've noted, will suffer. The effects on sped have not been studied, and these students benefit from consistency and may not be able to endure longer school days. 33% of sped families tend to oppose four-day school weeks, and I bet that number rises to 100 if you consider families that have children with serious disabilities who rely on school resources to learn to communicate and function on a basic level that most of us take for granted. I want to support my teachers, but I worry that other stakeholders will not benefit from this short-term fix, employers, workers, staff, parents, students, and special ed students in particular. I want a long-term solution that appreciates our teachers and promotes equity in education. I want transparency and a community-based task force to develop or at least evaluate any plan before any of this goes to a real vote. We cannot let short-term planning jeopardize education or teacher long-term satisfaction, or we will always be in educational crisis. Thank you.
And thank you, Jess, and team, and thank you especially for those of you who consider special ed.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience this evening in getting to our public comment. Additional comments or questions from the board?
No, I'll just, I'll just add, you know, I would not be in favor of getting the additional research to, to look in, into this, along with what we're already doing of, the, the work that we're already doing with teacher raises, staff raises with not just the teachers, but certified and classified, this certainly is not going to be one or the other, I thought we'd made that clear, but apparently not. And then, you know, just, I don't, I don't think it hurts us to go get additional information and see where that takes us.
One, one thing that I heard is that there's different impacts at different levels and for different students, so there would be a different impact for high-school-level students than there might be for elementary-level students, as it relates to childcare, for example. There may be, as we, as, you know, tonight, we, we are, had a first read for a program related to utilizing other experiences for students to count toward, toward credit, which I'm pretty excited about. There might be on that fifth day, opportunity for us to expand opportunities for students that we might not be thinking about. So, I, I wouldn't want to, because this to me is very preliminary, the information that we've been given tonight, and I'm hearing you say that you've heard some potential places where it would be helpful. So, I, as a single board member, would not want to say, you know, don't look at this idea anymore, if you, as a leader of this district, and your team are saying we could see potentially some benefits, I would ask that you just account for those things we identified tonight as being seriously problematic. And, you know, if, you know, again, if there was community support, this might be a different conversation and, at a different, a different year, when we have more information.
I think where I'm at, as, as I had shared, I do have a lot of pretty significant reservations. It seems to me, though, that the place to start at this point, if we are going to investigate further, is to, is to find out where our community currently is at around some of these ideas. And then to take a minute to step back and decide based on that feedback. I'll just say this, as a board member, I can't, I don't think I've received any emails from parents that are supportive of this, and I know that sometimes that's not a barometer of the community opinion, so I would want to seek out community opinion and really evaluate where we are at with that, because if it's, if it's significantly negative, I think we have to consider what that work would look like to change the narrative, and whether we have the capacity to do that, before we even begin to dig into even some of the other issues that, that, that were highlighted, and that, you know, the benefits and challenges that were presented, and then also some of the things that have been shared. So, I'm not opposed to doing some additional survey work, I, I would like for us to check in on the results of that before we take next steps beyond that, I think would be my, my ask. What would be your timeline to get that input and feedback to the board?
Oh.
Sorry. Looked over at you for a second, I was like, okay.
Step 31. We want to make sure that we are able to provide some level of information to the community, because I would tell you, if you were to ask me, before I could receive the information, I would say no, but after I received some information, I said, let me think about it. So, we want to make sure we consider the time of year, you know, to get that information, is the end of the school year the best time, or the beginning of the school year the best time? But also, like I said, being able to provide some level of information as relates to what we've been thinking about pursuing. So, we can definitely discuss that further in terms of what would make sense in terms of beginning to collect that information, but again, we're not looking to get this, you know, on the important agenda this coming school year.
I want to give my sincere thanks to the staff who have been working on this, and clearly have put in a substantial amount of time on, and thought into this conversation, so appreciate that. Also, thank you to our HR staff who presented on our recruitment and retention efforts at the beginning of this report. Appreciate all the work that you are doing on behalf of our staff, and on behalf of our district, and our students. I think that we are at the end of the agenda. Dr. Lewis, do you have any closing announcements for us?
Other than just, again, sending my thanks to J.C. and Dr., no. Okay, J.C. and Jess, for the tremendous amount of work you two have, have done, but not only you two, the entire Calendar Committee for their work that they've, they've been doing, and so, huge thank you for the countless number of hours spent there, and also to all the reports. Is Caitlin Lou Schuman still here? Okay. As you know, Caitlin did accept another position, so we just wanted to congratulate and thank her for her dedicated years of service to our HR department, and as a teacher, and a cheer coach, and what else has she, has she done?
Cheer coach.
But certainly, thank you, Caitlin. And if we could just give a round of applause to Becca. There's, there are some school districts around the country that have a permanent student board member, that's a voting student, student board member. You would be my first choice, but thank you for, for being here, and staying till late. Our next board meeting is scheduled for May 8th, and we will have our Safe and Supportive Schools update, along with some assessment data as well to share. That's all I have.
Lewis, with that, motion to adjourn?
This is Kay, I motion we adjourn.
This is Carol, go ahead.
All in favor? Aye.